Okay, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the City of Larkspur City Council meeting for Monday, June 17th. Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Andre?
Here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Way?
Here.
Mayor Candell?
I am here.
Having done a roll call, if you can, please stand. Let's do the pledge.
To the flag, United States of America. To the Republic, which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for that. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Public comment is time to comment on something that is not on the agenda. If you would like to make public comment on something not on the agenda, feel free to step up to the mic. And seeing nobody, I will close public comment. And we will go on to presentations and proclamations for which there are none. I will then go to the approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar are items that are usually non-controversial, so we put them on for people to vote on, but the first thing I do is put it to council. Would anybody in council like to pull any item off the consent calendar for discussion? Seeing none, I will put it to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to pull an item from the consent calendar for us to have a conversation about? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion regarding consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Andre?
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes. Consent calendar is approved. Next item is city manager's report. Mr. City Manager, what do you got for us?
First, Mr. Mayor, we're here this evening on a special meeting in large part because on Wednesday the city will be closed in recognition of the federal holiday for Juneteenth, so folks should plan accordingly. If they plan on using city services this week, we won't be open on Wednesday in recognition of that holiday. And then secondly, I only have one other thing, which is just to acknowledge the fast work of the Central Marine Fire Authority on not one, but two structure fires that occurred in the span of three days in Larkspur. And it's a real reminder for folks to take a lot of care. The first fire over in Greenbree actually involves solvent on rags, and it's a reminder that the proper thing to do with a rag that has solvents is to put them in water and then dispose of them through the hazardous waste facility, not try to just throw them away or leave them out to dry. Those are, can result in spontaneous combustion, which is what happened for that fire. So, but I just want to acknowledge they were on scene for both those fires rapidly and an excellent job of suppressing them. Sorry?
And no injuries.
And no injuries, yes.
And thank you for that, Mr. City Manager. I would like to reiterate for everybody watching or that will watch this later, one of those fires was by rags that spontaneously combusted. A lot of people think that's a myth, but if you used, I think it was maybe polish cleaner, something like that, and you have rags and you leave them, they can heat up to a point where they actually catch fire, so please be careful with that. As City Manager said, I think the proper thing is to put them in water so that doesn't happen. Okay, next item, council member reports. Is there anyone on the council that would like to give a report today? Okay?
I want to follow up on the city manager's comments on the fire. Great job to Central Marine Fire and also Central Marine Police who sent forces to secure the area and also divert traffic away from the impacted sites. With regard to public safety, many residents are losing their home insurance over fire risk, and it's come to my attention that some insurance companies are requiring that barbecues and propane tanks be prohibited on the balconies of multifamily units. And we have some property owners who are having difficulty ensuring that every tenant follows these rules, because there's a provision in ordinance 1068 that requires written consent from every tenant, you know, that they agree to all these rules. And so I was hoping that with respect to some of these public health and safety items, we can maybe take a look at 1068 and see how we might be able to amend the wording on that, just so that even if the tenant doesn't sign, formally sign, you know, the piece of paper that says no barbecue tanks or propane on the balconies, that, you know, the property owner can somehow enforce that. And other, you know, there's other pieces of new legislation that's coming. This is just one example, but maybe later in the year, we can put that on the agenda for discussion.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, do you need any more than that? Okay.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yeah, and just briefly, to remind people that on June 20th, this Thursday, SMART will officially start their on-demand shuttle. So if you're at the SMART station in Larkspur, it'll take you directly over to the ferry. I think it's a seven or eight-minute connection, and there will be a ribbon cutting. And then once the van is there waiting for the SMART train to return, it'll act as an on-demand shuttle, so it'll go to the different shopping centers like Town Center and The Village and Bon Air, and I think that'll really, hopefully, increase interest and use of public transport. So we've invested a lot. I'm really hoping to see the last mile gap close a little bit. So June 20th, 2 o'clock. Thank you. It will have a regular route between the SMART station in Larkspur and the ferry, and then beyond that, I think you can get an app on the web, and it'll act like Uber or Lyft. So it's quite inexpensive. I think, I'm not going to quote, but like maybe one or $2, and it's just a way to take you wherever you want to go to ferry or SMART or public transport. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Way? Nothing today. Only thing I wanted to bring up is I had mentioned to the City Manager on a future agenda to discuss council term limits. I wanted to just give everyone a heads up that I had asked that to be put on the agenda on a future agenda, so we can start thinking about it. Okay, having said that, we wrap up council member reports, and we are on to our public hearing. Having said that, before we start, we haven't had a public hearing for a while on an appeal, so if we could turn this over to our city attorney, who could give us the rules of the public hearing, we'd appreciate that. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy to give the council a brief summary of how these hearings work. So there is, in your agenda packet, the record for the proceedings below, which constitutes a portion of what we refer to as the administrative record. That is basically the evidence that is before the city council to consider, or at least part of the evidence that is before the city council to consider as part of this hearing. Your role is what we call quasi-adjudicatory in this setting. You are called upon to evaluate the evidence before you and to make a determination about whether or not you can make the findings that are required for this particular planning application based on the evidence that's in the record. The evidence includes, as I said, both the written materials that are before you, anything that is submitted as part of the public hearing tonight, as well as the oral testimony that's provided by the parties and the members of the public. So you can consider all of that, and you are legally tasked with connecting the evidence that's before you to the findings and basically articulating a basis, either to be able to make the findings or that you cannot make the findings, and the staff report lays out for you how staff is connecting those based on the evidence before you, and you are legally allowed to rely upon the staff report in making those connections. If there's anything else that you find in the record that you think is helpful for you to either make the findings or not, you can articulate those as well. Additionally, the options in front of you are to grant the appeal, to deny the appeal, or to ultimately approve the project, but attach additional conditions of approval to it. Those are all in front of you. If you deny, I guess another option that the council has sometimes taken is to send it back to the Planning Commission for further consideration if you think that there are issues that involve technical planning concerns that would be better taken up by the Planning Commission. Procedurally, the way that we work is that you'll receive a staff report. The applicants will have 10 minutes to make their case. The appellant will have 10 minutes to make their case. They can reserve time for rebuttal, and then you can open it up to public comments, and the council will then deliberate. You can, of course, ask questions of staff and the parties. That pretty much summarizes it. I'm happy to answer any questions that the council has about this process.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I just have a few questions. First, my understanding, this is a de novo hearing, and what that means is that we're basically starting fresh with the evidence, and we can choose to give some weight to the Planning Commission but are not required to, and we need to find things basically from scratch based on the evidence presented today.
That is correct. I'll just elaborate on that a bit to say that the, part of the difference is that you're not being asked to review whether or not the Planning Commission made the right decision, committed error, acted improperly. Because it's a de novo hearing, you are asked to look at the entire matter fresh, evaluate the evidence that's in front of you, and make a decision about whether or not you can make the findings that are articulated in the municipal code that are required to be made for this particular application. As the mayor said, you can give some weight to the determinations of the Planning Commission, since they are the advisory body that you have appointed to go deeper on planning matters, but ultimately, you're not called upon to agree or disagree with them, and you're not evaluating their decision-making. You're basically redoing the entire process.
All right, and another question. Since we are making findings, it sounds like the burden of proof on this hearing is going to be on the applicant to persuade us to make those findings as opposed to the appellant to prove to us not to make those findings. Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any other questions from council for staff?
I just wanted to relate that this is my neighborhood, the Palm Hill neighborhood. I live in the Palm Hill neighborhood, but I am more than 500 feet away from this primary. My primary residence is more than 500 feet away, so by California law, I can participate in this. But just so everyone knows that I do reside in this particular neighborhood.
Okay, and again, just procedurally, so I understand we're starting with the staff report, and then I believe you said the applicant, and then the appellant. Do we have any kind of public input on this, or is it just?
After, after the applicant and appellant have had an opportunity to address the council, then you should allow members of the public to speak as well.
Okay. And is there any kind of rebuttal, or it's just 10 minutes, 10 minutes?
They can reserve time to provide a rebuttal.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions before we start? Okay, let's get started, calling public hearing PLN 24-07 for 300 Alexander Avenue. Can we get a staff report, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of council. The item before you tonight is an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of PLN 24-07 for the property located at 300 Alexander Avenue. The project proposes to demolish the existing two-story home and construct a new 4,272-square-foot two-story residence with a detached ADU. It requires the entitlements listed there, design review, floor area exception, fence height exception, slope use permit, and a heritage tree removal permit. This project was first heard by the Planning Commission at its April 23rd, excuse me, meeting, where the commission ultimately voted to continue the item and asked the applicant to return with modifications to the plans in light of the comments made both by the commission and by neighbors and other interested parties. The main points of that meeting were a request to lower the second-story plate height from 10' 6" to 10' flat, to include a shade study in the plans, and to revise the landscape plans and show a revised location of the ADU. The meeting was, the item was then scheduled for the May 14th hearing of the Planning Commission, or the Planning Commission unanimously voted to approve the project, and then on May 22nd, within the 10-day appeal period, we did receive an appeal from the Riddles. And the appeal cited the project's height and distance from their shared property line and solar access impacts as the basis of the appeal. The two findings in question, which may be hard to read for you up there, are included in this slide, and these are from the design review permit. They are, and I'll read them to you here. Finding C, bulk, the orientation and scale of the proposed structure or addition in relation to the immediate neighborhood minimizes the perception of excessive bulk. The proposed structure or addition employs architectural features and details which minimize, rather than accentuate, the prominence of the structure. D, overall design, architectural features of multiple structures, additions or design elements combined together in an attractive and visually cohesive manner. Further, the overall composition of the proposed structure or addition is compatible with and complements the historic architectural and/or aesthetic character of the neighborhood. And considerations include, but are not limited to, architectural style, size, design quality, building materials, and similar elements. And so this is just a bit of background. I'm just going to cover for you kind of the details of the actual project now. So this is an overview of the site itself. On the left, it's highlighted there in blue. On the right is an alternative angle on Google Maps. This is a site plan with the home and ADU. I'm just going to highlight for you. This is the home. This is the ADU here. And as I mentioned in the staff report, the ADU falls under state law, so it's really provided for context only. It is a ministerial approval of an ADU. And then these are the elevation. So this is the south and the east elevation. This elevation here in the bottom corner, that is what faces the appellant's property. And the two windows here, this smaller window is for a bathroom in the master suite, and this larger window is in the staircase proposed for the home. And then this is the garage on the first level, and as I had said, the master suite up above. We've got the front elevation of the home here, and then some renderings of the ADU. And then these are further elevations of the rear of the home and the west end, which faces Loma Vista Avenue rather than Pepper. And then I did cut out what I thought were the most pertinent shade studies from the plan set, and these are for December, March, June, and September 21st, from 3:00 in the afternoon and 4:30 in the afternoon. This was what was cited in the appeal. From the height and the bulk of the structure would cast shade on the pool and the rear yard of 101 Pepper. So you can see this, hopefully you can see it, this little bit here, that's the pool of the property, which is shown in all of the studies, and then the darker bits are the shade. And I should specify, this is the proposed condition, and then this next slide, which is harder to read, I apologize, but it is in the plan set, is the existing condition, and there is a black locust tree right between the two properties on the property line, which already provides some shade. So that's what these are showing, is basically how it exists now, and this previous slide is.
I'm sorry, could I ask you for the, for this slide here, you have two rows going across?
Yes.
Is one current and the current plan and the future plan, what's the difference?
These are, these are all the future plans. So this first row is the shade at 3:00 PM in the afternoon.
Oh, got it.
And then this row is the shade at 4:30 in the afternoon. There are other shade studies for earlier in the day, but they don't show the impact that the appellant is citing. And then these are June 21st and September 21st at all the different points of the day, and I think 10:00 AM, 1:00, 3:00, and 4:30. And as I had mentioned, the project included a tree removal permit for three heritage trees. They're highlighted here in yellow for you. This black locust here in the corner, this is the one that was shown in that shade study on the previous slide that's proposed for removal. And then there's two live oaks at the front of the property. I think they're trees two and three, which are on the right and the left of the staircase respectively. At the Planning Commission meeting, the second Planning Commission meeting, there was a bit of public comment and back and forth on whether or not tree three needed to be removed. That's the oak in the front, yes. And we reached out, I reached out to the city arborist, who said that there is a clear wing borer infestation in that tree right now. There's no 100% cure for that, and that with the loss of the other trees in that stand, if that tree were to remain, it would likely, its chance of failure would increase. This is their grading plan. There's approximately 680 cubic yards of cut and fill being proposed for the property. Again, hard to see, but these plus signs here, that's areas of proposed fill, where they're putting dirt in. All the dashes are where they're removing dirt. So they're filling in this back patio area and along the front, along Alexander, and the cut is proposed for the area of the pool, and then the new ADU and this shared patio space. So finally, as noted in the staff report, staff believes that the project does meet the findings required to approve each of the entitlements that the applicant said requested, and the staff recommends that the council deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the project, subject to findings, conditions of approval, and a Class III Sequo exemption. That's all I have for you. I'm available to answer any questions, and both the applicant and the appellant are here as well. Thank you.
Okay, before we get to the applicant and the appellant, does anyone in council have questions for staff?
I have a few. First of all, I visited the property, and I noticed the shading by those trees. How, how is a shade, my naivete about shade studies, how does that take into account the shade issue when, once those trees have been removed, since they currently exist there?
So that's, that was what was shown on those previous plans.
There's one tree on this, the little black spot?
Yeah, that's just that, that one tree that's on the shared property line that they did the shade study for. So essentially, what that is showing is that that tree in the afternoon hours casts a similar amount of shade onto the pool as the home will. I think there are, in this lower one in September, the house will shade the pool entirely, whereas the tree right now only shades, I'd say, 40% of the pool.
Okay. So between April 23rd Planning Commission meeting and the May 14th one, when it was ultimately approved, the architect or the property owners there did a lot of things to adapt to what the questions were, the concerns were. They decreased the height on the second story by six inches, down to 10. They, they did the shade study, they revived, they moved the ADU, is that what I?
Yeah.
They moved it over a little bit more?
There was a request by the other neighbor at 8 Loma Vista to revise that location, so they pushed it forward four feet or so, five feet or so.
And then they also agreed to a construction management plan so that the porta-potties, et cetera, and the debris is moved
Yes.
away from the adjoining property.
Yes, I failed to mention that, I apologize. But originally, yes, the construction management plan had some of the less savory components of construction occurring right next to their shared fence, so they did relocate that, so it's further away.
And then there's a comment in here about moving the entire structure to a different, maybe six or eight feet, but then there was a comment by the Planning Commission or someone about the amount of grading that that would require is not tenable.
Yes, and I do actually need to kind of correct my wording there. I had conversed with the applicant, and I think I misunderstood that the point they were trying to make. So the home, my understanding is, moving it would not substantially alter the grading. What they are concerned about, though, is the impacts it's going to have on the neighbor at 8 Loma Vista.
Okay.
Who right now has a sightline between the two buildings, which would be pretty much removed if that were to be, if they were to be adjusted.
So it's not really a problem with the grading?
No.
Okay. Those are my first questions.
I just have a quick one. Also, the shading study, I'm trying to understand, so I have the, you know, Google Maps in front of me, and I see 8 Loma Vista 101, and also the, you know, 300 Alexander. So as far as lighting goes, I'm assuming there's no problem, you know, let's say in the springtime, you know, depends if it's summer, winter, but as far as lighting goes in the summer and spring, when it's used, there's no problem until about four or five? Or when does the, when does the, you know, shade actually start to, you know, cover the pool area on 101 Pepper?
Yeah, your takeaways are correct. It is pretty much limited to, I think, it starts to encroach on the pool about 3:00 PM, and I don't have the shade studies right in front of me. Let me see if I can pull them up here. Well, my computer's going a little slow, I apologize, but so, yeah, the most of the shade occurs essentially in the March month, in the month of March, the shade is limited to 4:30 and after, or sometime between 3:00 and 4:30 in there. In June, the shade rarely hits the pool at 4:30. A bit of shade touches the corner of the pool, but with the way the sun moves, I think the shade moves actually away towards Alexander.
Right, so the sun is further towards Alexander in the south.
Yeah.
So the summer months, when you're in the pool, you get less shade, to the tune of losing, you know, a little bit of the evening, like four or five o'clock?
Yeah, you, most of the impact is in the, I would say, the early evening, and then September, December time, when the sun is setting a little earlier in the day.
Okay, and one other question that we weren't talking about was just the, you know, the footage, it fits pretty close to the FAR 4,000 some square feet. I don't know that neighborhood very well. What is the range, you know, for people who, you know, I'm assuming there are other, you know, 4,000, 5,000, 3,000, 4,000 square foot homes in the area, right?
Yeah, that, that neighborhood is pretty eclectic, I would say, with, in terms of style and design and size overall. This one, the proposal, I think, is only, I think it's 500 square feet larger than the average. Actually, that's not correct. That's, I'm thinking of a different property, but it's, the FAR, I think, is .02 over.
Yeah, and one last question is, the actual fenestration going and looking over at 101 Pepper is a stairwell slat, right, and, and the bathroom? So this isn't like your living room or your bedroom or anything, so these are only when you're in the stairway, would you be looking possibly into the, into the neighbor property, or, you know, in the bathroom, which is probably?
Yes, the only two windows on that elevation are a bathroom window with a sill height that's raised pretty far off the floor, and I believe the applicant stated at a Planning Commission meeting, they were okay with some sort of window treatment to make that opaque. And then that larger window is, yes, in a transitory space that people are likely not going to be standing in for any great length of time.
Okay, thank you.
Gabe, just to my own experience in there, there are probably three homes within 50 feet of this property that are 5,000 square feet.
Yeah, the two homes directly across the street are very large.
Yeah.
Does, Andre, any questions at this point?
Just a couple of questions. The appellant has requested, as one of the potential items, that they remove the story above the garage, which, given that's the primary bathroom, I'm assuming that's not an option.
I, they could, that's the point of this meeting. You could certainly request them to do a, you know, a large-scale redesign. In staff's opinion, to remove that component but leave the rest of the home as designed is very incongruous. I don't believe it would meet all of the required design review findings at that point.
Okay. And secondly, so the, if I read the wording correctly, or what we're trying to find here is that there's not an unreasonable, what's the threshold here that we're trying to find in, with respect to privacy and solar access and light?
That is the beauty of subjective finding, I would say. It's up to you. The municipal code doesn't offer any further specifications other than unreasonable.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Great, thank you.
I think just to, just my experience is to really look at the record and what the planning commissioners discussed, what the public hearings that they had, and that they followed not only the design review and the rules that we have in our municipal code, but that they, I always find it helpful to see what they actually said about what they reviewed and what they asked to have changed and what was actually accomplished that way. And then what we have are, you know, as a city, is we ask for commissioners, oh, am I talking too much? We ask for commissioners, and we respect that they have a role to play too. So I always find that, just in my experience, to be a thoughtful way to look at it.
I'm just going to add to what Councilmember Way said, is that, for example, the finding about unreasonable loss or interference with privacy, light, or solar access is that the code anticipates that there may be some, it's just the nature of development, that for neighboring properties, there may be some loss of those elements for their own, on their own property. It's really a judgment about whether or not any loss is so extensive that it's beyond what a person should reasonably be expected to bear as a result of neighboring development.
All right, and I just have one or two questions. I am curious with the remaining issues of the, I guess, the, the new structure height being as close as it is to the property line. Were there alternatives suggested which would move, I guess, part of the upper level away from the property line? Would that move the whole structure? Were they considered? Are those possibilities?
I would probably leave that to the I would probably leave that to the applicant team to, to discuss with you. Um, I'm not sure if you could just move the second story and cantilever a portion of it over that shared patio between the ADU. I don't know if they've looked at that and what that might mean.
So, so is the entire second floor story the same height?
Yes.
Yeah, and the entire, entire second story is on top of the entire first story?
Yes.
Okay. And moving the entire structure was considered but rejected because it would cause another problem, which is blocking a view of another neighbor. Is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, correct. Okay.
Awesome.
Uh, just, just asking some questions here. All right, so having said that, any other questions? Uh, okay, so let's.
I, I, I might have misspoken while I was, on one point, while I was summarizing the pro, summarizing the process. I believe in these situations in which the appellant is not the applicant. Uh, council has traditionally asked the appellant to speak first and then, and then the applicant and then provide, and then if they decide to reserve time, then rebuttals.
Okay, uh, let's hear from the appellant then. Is the appellant present? Okay, so what I am going to do, if I can figure out how to use this clock here, um. No, no. And we're plugged in. Give me one second here.
Allison knows how to do these things.
Uh, we are plugged in.
Guess you have to use your iPhone. An iPhone.
All right.
Want me to get mine? No, yeah, it's all right.
Whoop, hello.
Oh, awesome.
Okay, got it. Thank you so much. All right, so let me just go over the, the rules so we're on the same page here. We got a clock here. I don't know if you can see the time here. But uh, it was, it's set for ten minutes. Uh, if you want a time check, just let me know. Uh, if you finish before ten minutes, you would save time for rebuttal afterwards, uh, after turning their side speak. I can give you, you know, warning, you know, time checks anytime you want.
Okay, that's okay. I'll, I'll be brief.
Okay.
I'm Greg Riddle. I'm here with my wife, Marla Riddle. We're the owners of one oh one pepper, which is uh immediately to the east of the property. And um, uh, the, the, in our pool areas, you've seen from the sides, is immediately to the east of the structure. And the structure is within five and a half feet of the fence line. Uh, just to comment on a couple of points that were made earlier, earlier in the Q and A. The height of the structure on our end, that is the east end, is twenty seven feet, ten inches. The height of the structure on the west end, that is the end that faces the ADU, is twenty four feet. So three and a half feet higher on the, uh, our side than on the side facing the ADU. There's five and a half feet between our property line or the fence line, I should say, and, and the closest point of the structure. When you compare that to the ADU, not only is the height lower, it's twenty four feet, not twenty seven feet, ten inches. There's also a patio, nine hundred and seventy one foot square foot patio, which is, has a width of twenty two feet. So it seems to me conceivable for the uh applicant to move the structure over ten feet or some lesser feet, so it's not to impose uh on our, the, you know, the bulk on our, uh, on our property. Uh, and I will take issue with the point that was made earlier that the planning commission considered uh moving the structure over ten feet and the sightline impact on uh Eight Loma Vista. Uh, I could be wrong, but I don't recall hearing that. Uh, I think it would be appropriate to, to, what I think would be appropriate would be to send it back to the planning commission. See what the sightline impact would be in moving it, moving the structure over a few feet, so it's not to be so overbearing uh on our property. The uh, I think the Larkspur code requires the height, elevation, placement of the proposed structure, and I'm quoting, is compatible with the prevailing neighborhood character and scale. It's true, there are some very large houses in our neighborhood, but I don't think there are any of those houses where a neighbor is confronted with a twenty seven foot, ten inch structure literally on top of them in their, you know, in an area that they use quite a bit for recreation and entertaining. So I don't think that uh finding uh by the planning commission is correct. I will say, and I take my hat off to the architect, it is a very attractive structure from the street. From our property, it's not so attractive. It's just basically a tall wall with a small opaque window and then a staircase with a window along there. Uh, in terms of the shade study, it's really quite ironic because we've lived in this property for, for thirty years and these black locusts grow four feet a year. And they're a total pest and it's right on the fence line and it's causes buckling in our patio. It's been a bone of contention for years and years and years. And there's also a privet there that they're going to take out, and the privet is also contributing to the shade study. But in any event, the, the effect of the leaves on the black locust is more a dappling uh rather than a complete blanket of the uh, of the solar uh access. Uh, I'll reserve my time. I'm happy to answer any time, the remaining time that I have. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know what the procedure is. Maybe I'll answer questions now, or I can let the applicant uh speak and answer uh at that time.
All right, well, let me, let me see. Does uh anyone on council have questions uh with the uh appellant?
Sure, I'll go first. Um, so I, I'm, you know, trying to um rank, you know, concerns because, you know, I read your letter and I've looked at the pictures and I'm, you know, still trying to get a really, uh, you know, realistic visualization. But just, you know, from your perspective, um, do you feel there's any invasion of privacy in the way it's built? Uh, and then.
They've made, I think, a good step is to make the bathroom window opaque. I think that's good. I don't think the windows and the staircase uh present a significant uh problem. I think we've, we've never really made the point that they do. I don't, I, I think they're fur, far enough away. It's just a big wall uh in an area that we use all the time uh for entertainment.
I got it. And then, you know, the shading, I, I was trying to, you know, appreciate, you know, having a pool, that's a, you know, a great recreation. It's an investment, but um, I'm assuming.
It's been there for sixty years, so.
Okay, largely used in the summer and, and so, you know, from the picture, it looks like the trees in the background as the sun sets on Tam is already starting to do shading and the house from the pole lines doesn't really change that.
Yeah, that, that, that damn tree, uh, which uh burnt over, well, probably twenty plus years. I begged Andy Jurellis, the prior owner, telling him that I'd cut it down, I'd pay for a replacement. And he adamantly refused and at the end of his, you know, for the last ten, fifteen years, it was been absolutely impossible to talk to him. So nothing has happened then. I didn't want to file a lawsuit uh because, you know, just didn't want to be a bad neighbor like that. But it, that tree almost died uh three years ago. Unfortunately, or unfortunately, we had heavy rains for the last two years and it's kind of burst back into life and it's growing like, like mad. I, it's a total pest of a tree and it's been a, been a real problem for the whole area. Now to find, it's just totally ironic to me to now find that being used against us in terms of this shade study. It's just, you kind of throw up your hands and say, this is insane, because I think we could have brought an action years and years and years and years and years ago, but we wanted to be good guys to get the damn thing uh cut down.
Okay, just, just from my, I mean, understanding of your, your pool use.
And let me also say that it's not just the, it's not just the black locust there. It, the shade study takes into account the privet, which is also grown to an enormous height. And I think the code says that for bushes, you're limited to eight feet. Uh, and it's way over eight feet, so.
Okay.
That's, I mean, it's just a, been a headache.
Okay, and so kind of back to the original question, so invasion of privacy, shade on the pool. What, what would you say is your, you know, your top rank concerns? I mean, you've stayed, I just made for the record.
Top ranked concern is the, is the uh closeness of the structure to an area that we use all the time for entertainment and recreation. It's just an imposing structure. It's very attractive from Alexander, but it's not attractive at all from, from our side of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Can I ask a question of Alex or staff? What is our municipal code about um uh distance from a structure to a, a fence line?
So this, the setback requirements for this property, it's six feet from structure to property line. And in this case, the fence and the, the property line between the two are not the same. So that's why the structure is closer to the fence then.
Just by way of background, the fence has been there for twenty five years. Before that, there was a fence in the exact same spot that me and Andy, uh, we paid for the replacement, Andy Jurellis, a former owner. But the prior fence was exactly, so our view is that that fence line is the property line.
So just so I can be clear, Alex, the, the exception, so it's generally six feet, but because this is a very odd angled lot. I, I did go to, to visit the lot. It's a very odd angle. Both of the lots are. The Ri, the Riddles lot and um the uh, the new home development lot, that made the exception to be five feet, six inches, no?
There, there is no setback exception. That building meets this, it's, it's. If you, if the fence were the property line, it would not be, it would not meet the setback, but the fence is not the property.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, we got a little retain, a planter retaining wall. It's, it's, there's a lot of stuff there that's been there for decades. Okay.
Uh, hold on, other questions from uh council?
Um, so from some of the photos, I believe that were attached to your letter and you can see the story poles from your backyard. It seems to me that the, the proposed new height is very similar in height to the existing home.
Well, the existing home is about twenty five feet from the fence line, so it's not an imposing structure.
Uh-huh, but, but, but it's about, so you're, we're talking point five feet versus twenty seven, yeah, it's a little bit higher, but.
The existing.
Uh-huh, so your main issue is that it's too close to your home, is that?
Too close.
Okay, so not necessarily the height, but the distance too.
Yeah, and I, again, I, I don't think, unless I'm mistaken, that the planning commission really considered the impact on six Loma Vista in moving the house a little bit over uh to uh, to the west.
I, I might offer a point of clarification on that. Yes, that was not brought up at the planning commission meeting. The applicant team reached out to me after I had written the staff report and said that was their concern.
It's, it's not something that the, I think that's an important thing that the planning commission ought to have considered. So I'll leave it there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I just have one question. I'm, I'm curious. You had mentioned, uh, I think a patio on one side?
Yeah, see, so there's their main home structure.
Okay, so hang on. My, my question, is the patio a second story patio or a first story patio?
No, it's on the ground, it's on the ground.
Okay, so the patio is on the other side, so if.
Which, I'm talking, uh, what I was referring to was the patio between the main house and the ADU.
Right.
That's nine hundred and seventy one square feet and it's twenty two feet wide. So that's the, that's the distance that they give the ADU resident, assuming there is a ADU resident. They take into account, you know, the bulk of this house and its aesthetics. Whereas on our side of the property, we have a higher twenty seven foot, ten inch structure, five and a half feet from our fence.
Okay, so, got it. Thank you very much. Other questions? Uh, nope. Uh, thank you very much. Okay, is there someone from the applicant here?
I, I think Alex had one additional.
Yes.
To offer a clarification.
Point of clarification. I think the appellant and I may have misunderstood each other when they were in the office earlier. Uh, the square footage of the patio between the ADU and the home is five hundred and eighteen square feet. The rear patio behind the main home where the swimming, swimming pool, pool is, excuse me, that's the nine hundred plus square foot patio. Uh, it's seventeen feet, two inches wide at one point and twenty foot, nine inches wide at another point.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Uh, is there someone from the applicant uh here? Okay, give me one second while I reset. Okay, and just to repeat, it is ten minutes. Uh, I, you can leave time afterwards if you want to speak again, um, but it's a total of ten, okay?
Hi, my name is Shannon Kruger and my husband and I are the property owners of three hundred Alexander. I just want to thank the planning committee and the planning department for their support with this project. We know it's taken a lot of additional time. In designing our home with the team from Polski Architects, we took care to come up with a design that would both enhance and be in harmony with the surrounding neighborhood while complying with the city's building requirements. This was a challenging endeavor because of the shape, slope and location of the lot along. We are really happy and dozens of neighbors are very happy with what the Polski team came up with. We were receptive to all reasonable accommodations and changes that were asked of us by the planning committee. Relocating the construction materials, we jogged in our fence to accommodate a door from Eight Loma Vista. We were cooperating with the city's arborist about the trees. We are, we are open and flexible when it comes to things that we deem reasonable, especially because everything we're asking for is within the limits. We heard a lot about the structure setback and the height and the shade, which was thoroughly covered by the planning committee. And it's my understanding that we were in our limits and it's unreasonable for a neighbor to dictate a complete redesign, especially with the unanimous votes. Uh, delaying this project further could have significant impact on our timeline. Our contract Schalke brothers is anxious to get the foundation done before the rainy season. Further delay could push us out way beyond a reasonable timeline and have significant financial repercussions. We are active community members and strive to be good neighbors. We have great relationships with all of our current neighbors in the Mont Magnolia, Alexander, Monavista area. And it's our intention to move forward with this process in a friendly, amicable manner. It's disappointing that it's had to be re-looked at this many times. A couple of notes from the earlier comments are, we are following the setbacks. Our point with the shade study was that despite their dislike of the trees that were already there, the pool is already shaded. We're not newly shading a previously unshaded pool. The shading is there, it's changing. Um, the stairwell windows, I wanted to point out, don't even look to their property. They look towards the garage. And there's more privacy in the new design than in the current one. The current one, there's a wall of windows in the main living area that look directly into their backyard. So we are all about privacy. We'd love to provide it for them and we think we've been pretty fair about making whatever adjustments the, the planners required. So, any questions?
Okay, give me one second here, because questions don't count as time. So I'm gonna stop that. Uh, and uh, let's uh see, council, any questions?
Can you just describe what you mean by jog in a fence for Loma Vista? I think I saw that um, a photo in one of the staff, one of the reports here. But what was that process? What was that request and, and how did you have to, how did you engage with that?
Yeah, so um, there is a complaint about, we're fencing because we want to and also we have to with a pool. And there's a door from the Eight Loma Vista property that is, would, would be now within setbacks, but it's a historic home. And we knew he wouldn't be able to fully operate that door because of how close it's built to the property line. So we jogged in the fence into our property to kind of create a space so as to not prevent access. Like, we could have put it right on the property line, because it is a, you know, a shared space or whatever. But we thought the right thing to do would be to jog it in. So you can kind of see it's like an L shape now.
Saw that.
Yeah.
Maybe your architect can clarify to sort of the comment about the patio space and, or, or maybe you can. Because there's some uncertainty as to the size of the patio space that's between the um ADU and the main structure. That Alex tells us it's five hundred and eighteen square feet.
That's what, he's right. Yeah, I think they were talking about a back patio being much larger. The one that's between our home and the ADU is seventeen. Seventeen two, and then at the front, it's twenty, twenty foot seven. And then the other thing too, we cannot shift the house ten feet to the left.
That was my, gonna be my next question.
Yes, also because we have to comply with the setbacks from our back fence. And that's one of the challenges about this lot being kind of triangular. If we shift the house, how they're asking us, ten feet that way, we are well within the setback now on that back line. So we were really thoughtful in trying to come up with the best solution to get the space that we needed. And this was the best solution we could come up with.
So moving it would put you in the setback for eight Loma Vista?
Yes.
Okay, I know it's it's a very odd triangular lot.
Yes.
With a with a raised area in the center.
Yes.
I'm sorry, and is the seventeen foot separation between the main house and the A D U, is that required by law or state statute?
I believe that the building code requires five feet distance, otherwise you get into fire rating walls and things like that.
Okay, between the main house and the A D U, okay.
Our main concern with that space was part of like, we discussed earlier or in the earlier meetings, but we did try to not have it look so bulky. So that was one of the things that our design team kind of came up with. If you have that A D U right up against the house, it starts to look bulky. So part of those measures that we did to design so it looked better from the street, that was spacing it out a little further.
Other questions? All right, I I have a couple of questions, I'm not sure if you or your architect want to answer them. I'm looking for the alternatives, so for example, moving the house, the entire house from where it is to five feet over, whatever is to give a little more spent, give a give a little bit more space. What the cost would be for that, what the timeframe would be for that, is that something that you can answer, an architect can answer, which what it's?
It's, I I don't know if anybody could, it would really depend, but it would be significant.
I mean, because you would have to move the entire foundation and, I mean, I I'm not sure how that would work or if it's even possible, that's why. Yeah, if you could come up and and and. Yeah, if you if you could just, for the record, introduce yourself, please.
I'm Laura Van Amber with Polski Prostine Architects.
Okay.
So the, any amount we move the house.
Get closer, I'll say that he can't.
Okay. At this point, we're we're shoved into every building setback on the lot. So we can't move the house any bit without a redesign. So if we want to go back and redesign the house, I mean, if that's what's asked of us, but I I would hope not.
Yeah.
And and hypothetically, if you were tasked with changing the design in such a way that it was reversed, maybe where is, well, first of all, let me ask you, is it accurate that it's twenty four feet on the other side of the house and twenty seven feet on the closest side to the fence?
Well, if if you went to visit the site, the the driveway now is very steep. So it's, it's already a difficult garage to access. So it, that is kind of the only place to put the driveway. And the reason why it's higher on on the side facing the neighbor is because of the driveway. So I was trying to give it, you know, we're trying to give access easier to the garage. And I think we might be a little bit lower than the existing driveway is now.
So would it be accurate to say it's not really practical to come up with a plan to reverse the top floors so that it would be twenty four feet closer to the fence and twenty seven on the other side?
Right, it can't be done, yeah. The property sort of slopes a little too, doesn't it, to the west?
Yeah.
Ed, oh, sorry. And and the sightline, I think it's eight Loma Vista, that 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 is the neighbor, not not six, so eight. Movement, has there been any study or, you know, exploration of of what a reconfiguration would do as far as, you know, those sightlines or their privacy or shading or anything like that?
We didn't do a study, the bigger issue is that if we were to move it, we'd be within the setback. The back corner of the prop of our structure would now be within the setback from the back kind of angled line of the Loma Vista.
So, sorry, just help me understand a little bit, so if the property is moved west, I guess because it's triangular, you're, you you've got a sloped edge, so you're gonna bump up against, so you can't really move in that direction. And then east, you have the slope, it's like this weird baseball diamond where you're, you know, a diamond in a diamond. So you're gonna bump up against the edge pretty quickly, is is that what you're saying?
And and also just to mention that when we went through the first time, eight Loma Vista asked us to come to their house to look at the story poles because they were not happy with the structure being in their view, so it was, it was definitely thought of, like, how does this house impact eight Loma Vista? So moving it to the west right now, the way it's situated, the A D U, he just looks over the roof, you can't really, you don't really notice the A D U, but if you move the whole house, it's gonna be directly impacting eight Loma Vista.
So so your design constraints, as far as lot constraints, are driveway primarily slope setback, you know, having a diamond in a diamond. And then you have, you know, the neighbor policy with both eight Loma Vista and and of course the appellate here, okay, thank you.
Any more questions from council?
Just really quickly to your point. It's, it's also that we're not violating any of the setbacks, we are within our allowable constraints. So I think if we were asking for a bunch of that outside, I could see a major opposition and a rework and all of those things, because we are already within our limits, it doesn't seem reasonable for me to go back and redesign an entirely new house.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now, let me ask staff, I guess our city attorney. The appellant has time for a rebuttal. Does the appellant have the option to listen to public comment first and then give the rebuttal if they would like to?
Yeah, I believe that's that's been allowed in the past.
Okay, so I will ask a parent, would you like to give your rebuttal now or would you like to wait and hear public comment first? Okay.
The, we're not asking that the entire project be shifted ten feet into the setback. What we're asking is that the patio, instead of being seventeen feet to twenty feet, seven inches wide, be shrunk so that they still comply with their setback rules on the west side of the property. And we have more room on the east side of the property. In terms of lowering the the structure, there's a, you know, it's peaked like this, this is dead space here, there's nothing going on there. So they could lower it to match the height on the, on the the west side. I want to emphasize again that the planning commission, when I was there, did not consider the impact of moving the structure, shrinking the width of the patio and moving the main house structure, don't move the A D U, just move the main house structure over a few feet. The planning commission did not take into account any impact on eight Loma Vista. It would be appropriate to send it back and see if in fact there is an impact, rather than to speculate this evening as to whether there's an impact. There's, in terms of the foundation, there is no foundation now. It has not, the foundation has not been constructed, so there's no cost. Right now, there's just Andy's old house sitting there and the construction has not begun. There's a lot of debris, you know, bushes and tall grass, that's kind of a fire hazard, but that's a separate point. In terms of neighbors being happy, obviously, the neighbors who see it from Alexander are gonna be happy because it's a very attractive and it's certainly much better than the existing house. The windows that Andy has had from his old house, that was like twenty five feet away from the property line. So it never really looked, there was no sight problem down into the pool area. So that's, I think the windows are, the neighbors are happy, but they don't face the same view that we face. The window, Andy's window did not look down on our pool area. Yeah, I guess Alex led us a little bit astray, it's five hundred and eighty one square feet. But nevertheless, the width is at one point seventeen feet and another point twenty point seven, twenty feet, seven inches. You know, it's nice that they talked to eight Loma Vista. We, or my wife called Polski, Mr. Polski, invited him over to see our house, he refused to come over. You have any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions and all. I don't know if there's an opportunity for a re-rebuttal or or not.
There's, there's only one rebuttal, so.
Okay.
Are are there any questions from council?
Yeah, it just seems fundamentally unfair is is my point. And and the point that they would then be in the setbacks, that's fallacious, they they can shrink the size of the width of the patio. And in terms of additional cost, I can't imagine that that would be really anything substantial.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have a question for Mr. Riddle, but Alex, can I ask you, just to reflect? When I look at the site plan and let's just hypothetically move the house, I see the point, the top point of the of the structure that's on the west end would then, maybe we can get that, can we get it back up?
Up here.
So so that that picture there, so, yeah, at the top left.
So.
That would be then, if we, if it was to be moved, the top, the top left of the house that's to the, facing the A D U, that would now be in the setback and be violating the setback.
Yeah, yes, I'll just take you through really quickly here, so the rear yard setback in this zoning is fifteen feet. It's shown by this dashed line right here that runs across the entire property. So the building does touch that line at this corner, so if you were to shrink this patio space down and move this building over, you would end up with a triangle right here that is in the setback.
It's in the setback of eight Loma Vista. Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
There's a variance provided for this setback.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this point, we will open this up for public comment. If anyone from the public would like to say something, come on up, public comment is limited to three minutes.
Oh, I'm the mysterious eight Loma Vista.
Sorry about your house on Friday.
Yes, thank you, I'd like to thank the fire department, the police department for saving my bacon on Friday when my house got on fire, it was within a whisper of going under. And they came in and very quickly saved the day, so, and they were incredibly professional and very sensitive to the fact that my house almost burnt down, so that was really terrific and it was good. If you look at page eight on this document, what Greg was just talking about is we talked extensively with the planning commission about these two points. If you see the one on the, you know, on page eight on the bottom, on the left and the right, that's five feet of dead space. And what we were talking about is a compromise, is there's, there's no, they don't have cathedral ceilings. That's just empty attic space, and what we suggested was just drop those down to make a flat roof. And I have a flat roof and I have, you know, if this is gonna be stucco, you know, clay tile roof would be probably more appropriate from, if you're gonna do a Spanish Revivalist type of house, and flat roofs are quite common there. And so I think earlier when someone said the whole roof was flat all the way across, that's not quite right. It actually goes flat and then bops up right in front of my breakfast nook and dining room table. And when I sit there, they're blocking the ridge line, so I think if they actually moved it down five feet, I would totally block the ridge line. And that would be an issue. And, you know, the fact of the matter is, it's a very simple and easy fix that would require some architectural work. And the point is, I think from the street, it is not gonna make a bit of difference, but it will make a big difference to the Riddles and it will make a big difference to me. And I don't think the Lamana's sitting in their backyard and, you know, having a nice party are ever gonna look up and say, oh, my gosh, those fact that we don't have two points at the very end, you know, make this house worth a lot less. We're asking for just a really, or I am asking, and I think, you know, Greg at the very end asked for just a really modest modification. And I think a good architect could make that work. I do appreciate that the Riddles, excuse me, that the Lamana's jogged their fence so I could open my door. Right, I mean, it's supposed to just banging it every time. It would be nice if they didn't have a six foot fence, you know, pools require a five foot fence, but that six foot, which will block all the light going into where my kids hang out and spend most of their time. I think there's ways in which you can mitigate that, but, you know, I think the bigger issue is really this is the two bumps at the end. And that's not requiring them to move their house, it's not requiring them to do a complete rewrite of their plans. It's just a little compromise and that's all I'm asking.
Okay, thank you. Are there other public comments, come on up?
James Home Sarsper, my interest and concern has to do with the trees and particularly the trees in front. Streetscape here, and I will just show you these pictures, if you look at the top picture, you will see that there are a great number of trees in the front. And my concern is that a lot of those trees are gonna go. And the.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Well, you may be used to walking in the well in court, I don't think you can do that here, I think he's gotta go back to the. Okay, so. Hold on, hold on, I appreciate it. Okay, we're trying to keep protocol here, which is moving forward. If you have exhibits that you would like to show us, please give it to the clerk, the clerk will approach us. Nope, and if you could please speak from the microphone, we'd appreciate that, thank you.
There's one for each, one for each council member and one for staff. And the the, those exhibits are excerpts from the Larkspur Climate Action Plan. And what I'm requesting the council to do is turn to the second page here, which says urban forest. And then look down to item D. And it says, require that site planning, construction and maintenance of new development preserve existing healthy trees and native vegetation on the site to the maximum extent possible. Then it says, replace trees and vegetation not able to be saved. And that in turn is a, that that continue, that's a sort of a continuation of the preceding policy in C, which says, require planting of replacement trees and or fees to support mitigation planning in Larkspur parks and open space areas. That is your Larkspur Climate Action Plan. My concern is that, my understanding is that all or most of the trees shown on the picture that I gave you will be gone, those trees in front. And that will substantially affect the the streetscape, particularly if you look at the little Xs on the trees. The one tree, tree three. The arborist, the applicant's arborist said it could be saved, the city's arborist says that now it can't be saved. So we have a conflict of opinion, and ironically, it's the applicant's arborist who seems to feel that it can be saved. In any event, my feeling is, if also, if you look at the pictures that I gave you, you will see that there virtually no trees in front of the house, there's just one now in place of a large stand of trees. So what I am requesting is that consistent with the Larkspur Climate Action Plan, which uses mandatory language here, there should be a replacement of the trees and vegetation not able to be saved. I see no evidence that that is really being proposed and I believe it should. And I think that the heavily vegetated streetscape should be maintained or restored to the maximum extent possible, consistent with the Climate Action Plan, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Sky, can I just ask a procedural question about this public comment? That the appellant didn't list anything about those trees in their appeal. And that decision about those oak trees was already made by the planning commission. And since it was not something. And since it was not something that the appellant has asked us to review, it's not something we should take into account?
Because this is a de novo hearing, the city council has the opportunity to review all evidence that's been submitted and to craft new conditions of approval related to the project if you so choose.
Okay.
But but hang on, I have a question about that because there seems to be something unfair to the applicant to spring something on the applicant that the hearing that they didn't have any notice was going to be an issue. And then to ask them to somehow respond or defend it, you know, spontaneously just doesn't feel right.
I I don't disagree. This is the nature of the hearings before city council. One of the options that the council would have would be to continue the hearing until your meeting in July so that the applicant would have an opportunity to develop information to respond.
Hold on, just to one final, this, these.
Mr. Mayor, do you wish to recognize the speaker?
Excuse me, Mr. Holmes, give us a second. First of all, I need you to wait until the city attorney is finished. You did have about thirty seconds left on your time, so I will allow you to speak again. But I need you to wait until till we're done with the conversation we're having, okay? Was there more that you were saying about that?
No, I was I was done, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, okay, so you have an additional thirty seconds.
This material was before the planning commission. At the time of the planning commission, the only tree, three was at issue. However, it is only subsequent to the planning commission hearings that it was determined that tree three could not be saved according to one of the experts. So that this issue was basically is a continuation of what was before the planning commission rather than being a complete new issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yeah, just a quick question, maybe for Alex. So I'm trying to recap sort of the heritage tree part of this process. So I would imagine, you know, what goes through planning is to see if there are any heritage trees, which is separate from what's in the climate action, you know, language that was just mentioned was is that, you know, can you kind of walk me through the workflow there?
Yes, anytime a project is submitted and they are proposing any tree removal, the definition of a heritage tree is a tree with a trunk diameter greater than fifty inches, measured two feet above the ground. So that is follows kind of its own separate process from the language in the Climate Action Plan. For what it's worth, there still will be, I think I counted four trees that remain on that Alexander Avenue frontage. And like the city attorney said, if you so wish, you could condition a replant requirement for the project.
Okay, and but the heritage, you know, that there, that part was cleared in in the planning process. There were no heritage trees. It didn't need a hearing for that.
Oh, excuse me, three of the trees proposed for removal do meet the heritage tree definition. And so tree number three, which Mr. Holmes was referencing, that is a heritage tree. It's that tree, it's sister tree across the stairway entrance of that property currently. And then the black locust that's proposed for removal between three hundred Alexander and one oh one pepper. Those are all heritage trees.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we are still open to the public portion of this hearing. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to comment on this hearing? Seeing none, I will close the public portion of this hearing. And let me ask, can I have someone from the applicant, either the architect or the applicant? I just have a couple of quick questions, if that's okay. Okay, two, two issues were raised that I'm curious to have your response to. One of them was the roof line. Apparently, the roof line is not flat. It's got little parts that go up on the two ends that could potentially make a difference to the neighbors. First of all, is that accurate? And second of all, if it is accurate, is that an integral part of your design that we need to keep? And if it is, could you explain to us why?
Please, would it be possible to pull up the picture? I think that might help.
I think it's page number eight. And when you're addressing it, it would be helpful for me because I noticed that this was a comment that came up several times in the planning commission. And it was brought up and brought to them also. So just can you relate what that experience was?
About the about the roof.
About the roof because it's I see it's written twice on both planning commission meetings, they discuss the roof line.
So at the most recent meeting, it came up again. And the planners said that it would adversely affect the design if we lowered it. And it was also mentioned that it's dead space. It's not, that's where all the ducting runs through and it's also a functional attic. And it's not a Spanish style house, so a flat roof was never considered not an option. And.
It would not be very harmonious if the ends were flat and then we kept the pitch in the middle. It's just part of the look of the design and what they wanted their house to look like. So and again, it is functional because the ducks and the HVAC is in the attic space.
And how much higher is it on the sides than than in the middle? Do you know?
It's looked flat across this way. It looks higher here because we're digging down further to make the driveway not so steep and to also accommodate the garage.
Okay, but do you do you know literally like?
How tall is the attic?
Well, Al, if you were to take from the the middle of the house where the roof is to the ends where the roof is, how much higher is it on the ends? Do you know?
I'm not sure I understand, but there we have building sections if you want to open a building. I mean, it comes down to a point on the ends.
Sorry, is it a hip roof design? I can't really see.
Is it what?
It's hip, so it's not like a gable that you could lower. So you'd actually have to truncate that. You'd have to flatten that.
Every portion of the exterior, it's sloping up, so it's.
Pyramid design.
It's lowest at the perimeter and it's always sloping towards the center.
It was discussed extensively at the planning meetings and it was determined at both meetings that it would be a negative impact on how the house looks by lowering it, changing the slope, all of those things were extensively discussed.
Just to clarify, I think the mayor's question is, is the the peak of the of the hip roof, you know, that elevation to the upper ridge of the gable, what's that differential? Is it two feet, four feet?
It changes because it's because it's always sloping up towards the center. It's different during depending on where you're.
Well, there's only one peak, there's only one peak.
Well, like you can see this peak right here, it's it's changing all the time. I don't know if that one's the most, if that one's the highest one. I don't, I don't.
So so I I'm referring to the one, actually, I guess, I guess we're referring to both of them, I guess. Because if you look at the bottom diagram, it looks like both ends kind of have a peak, is that right?
It peaks all over. If you have the three dimensional view, maybe we can like the three D views. Because if you take one off, you're going to take them all off.
Okay, I see.
There's a lot of.
Yep, I see.
Like the three D.
Yep. No, you had a picture there that showed it.
You looking for this?
Yeah, that one on the bottom, the bottom right one shows that, I think.
Okay.
Okay, that that and just so you understand, I understand that the planning commission has made findings, but but because this is what they call a de novo review, we have to look at everything over. I can't just take their word for it and.
Oh, no, of course, I was just referencing Catherine Way's comment earlier about taking into consideration what they had discussed.
Okay, and and the other question that I had was it was brought up about the trees. Is it possible or part of the plan to do any replanting of trees? And if it is, could you just explain what the plan is?
I mean, if you look at the landscape plan, it shows the new trees that are proposed. I believe there are screen trees, one, I mean, you can, it's towards the end of the set.
There's multiple trees that are being planted as far as the landscape plan is concerned.
In the front, they're not shown to add more oaks to the, I think the idea from the landscape architect is there's that one really large oak to really showcase that oak instead of putting two more oaks in the front. But, I mean, I don't, I think they would be fine if you were to say plant two more oaks there. I mean, it's not, it wasn't, I think it was more the landscape architect thought that was going to show off that one big oak better.
Okay. Other questions from council? Okay, that's all I have, thank you. Okay, with that, I will close the the testimony portion of the hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. If anyone would like to start us off.
Well, I I just wanted to reflect a little bit on what I heard. I I'm, you know, thinking back, I was looking through my notes where we've had quite a few of these in the last couple of years and trying to maintain a certain consistency, you know, for public benefit too. And, you know, as I asked the appellant, you know, what the key concerns are, what I'm hearing is is really, it's sort of the just the imposing structure, it's too close. You know, what I usually come into these meetings sensitive to is invasion of privacy, loss of view, you know, serious loss of light. And my, you know, understanding from my takeaway is that's not the case. But there is a certain aesthetic, a certain livability. And to me, that's to be balanced against, you know, the people who are putting an awful lot, investing in and building the house and would like a certain aesthetic that they live with as well. And so the roof line was an interesting argument, but my my read is I thought it was a simple hip roof and it looked like a stacked with a lot. I don't see a simple flattening, nor do I see a couple of feet changing things significantly. It looks like the landscape plan does provide for vegetation. The setbacks and all the ordinances were followed. So I, you know, it seems to me that the application is consistent with, you know, all the rules we've set. And I really would like to see some predictability when people come to Larkspur. It's notorious how hard it is to build and design. And I would like to believe that people are really considerate and sensitive to their neighbors, but they also enjoy a certain freedom of design and and use of their space. So that's my my thoughts so far.
Okay, other comments?
I'll go. So I appreciate everyone taking the time to come and make their presentations. I actually attended the two planning commission meetings where this project was discussed. And I did hear from the landscape architect and also the, I guess it was Polski who came in and presented the project. I think I land very similar to where to the same place where council member Paulson is landing. I think that the owners of the property have made accommodations and changes in response to some of the feedback that they've gotten from the neighbors. I I do agree that, you know, they're having a new structure so close to your home may seem imposing, but from the from the from the photos that I saw, I think there's you know, it's it's not from your home, it's from your pool area. And so there is, just given the sightlines, it won't seem as imposing. And it seems like the structure, the new structure will be similar in height to the existing structure. And while it may be closer, it doesn't sound like it's possible to move it without going into the setback or triggering a large redesign, which would incur additional costs and also delay start of the project. So I I think that, you know, it is within all of the rules that we've laid out. I think that the shade study was interesting. It showed that you will have use of your pool and your backyard area for most of the summer months, except for perhaps later on in the afternoon, which is which might potentially be the same or maybe perhaps slightly better after the trees are removed. So I I think that I I do feel that the the design and the structure that the owners have put forth are are reasonable.
Vice Mayor Way.
This is a has been a challenge in the extent that the lot is a very odd lot. And a lot of the lots on Palm Hill are like this, and I know a lot of the lots in Larkspur are too. But from reading the record and from seeing what the planning commission and the presentation that Alex gave us about the reason why the design is the way it is meets our qualifications for what we need. And it strikes me that the property owners have done as many modifications that they can within a reasonable amount for the size of the structure they're trying to build for their home. It will be a change in that neighborhood because the older home that was there has had been deteriorating for years. And it pretty much was an eyesore to a lot of people. So this is going to be a definitely a change. I'm, I feel confident that the planning commission, and we have a very strong planning commission now with a lot of very skilled people, had the changes made that was requested within a reasonable amount. I I was kind of struck by the Chair Chalmers' comment that she wrote, which I I thought was interesting. She expressed that the planning commission's goal is to approve a design that is good for the city, not just the immediate neighbors. And I think that's something that we need to consider, that the compromise appears to have happened. I can support the design as it is now. I think it would be unreasonable to insist that they make major changes to this already existing project that they have underway. It doesn't seem like reasonable, it doesn't seem like moving it, moving it will have a negative impact on other neighbors by bringing it within the setback. So I'm leaning the way both my other council members are.
And I have nothing to add, so do we have a motion?
Sure, I'll move that we find the, let's see, how do I best phrase this? I guess that we make the findings for the application.
I'll second.
And approve.
And I'm going to go to our city attorney and make sure the wording of that was correct.
What I'd suggest from what I've heard from the discussion is that the motion would be to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's approval of the project by adopting the proposed resolution, which is attachment number one, including the findings that are made in the resolution.
And Councilmember Paulson, would you accept that as a friendly amendment to your motion?
Yeah, I'd say that's the best wording, so it's not an amendment. That's the way it was supposed to be said.
All right, and do we have a second on that new one?
I'll second.
Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Andre.
Yes.
Councilmember Paulson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Way.
Yes.
Mayor Candell.
Yes. Okay, that closes our public hearings. Now we move to our business items. Business item eight point one, Elections Code nine two one two, report on initiative petition entitled limit rent increases for the evictions and of tenants of some rental units and consideration of additional council actions related to the initiative. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, at your last meeting, you received and accepted the elections officials certification of the signatures for a citizens initiative to limit rent increases for and evictions of tenants, some rental units. But you chose to act under Elections Code ninety two twelve to ask that staff return within thirty days with what's called the impact report or analysis of the ramifications of the initiative. The way that code section works is barring us finding something that would be so detrimental to the city as to result in driving us to bankruptcy or some such thing. The primary purpose is for us to educate you and and the community on what staff's initial understanding of the initiative is and what its implications and impacts are under eight factors that are listed in the Elections Code. We've provided you with a staff report to attempt to summarize those various impacts. And then we, I'm going to do a brief presentation for the benefit of folks who may not have had time to go through the material. At the end of this business item, you do have an obligation to act and to adopt the resolution to put this on the November ballot. So I just want to remind you, Mr. Mayor, you do. So I just want to remind you, Mr. Mayor, you do have action to take tonight. With that, I'm gonna do this presentation, and then you can discuss, ask questions, and take any comments you make from the public. So uh, what we wanted to do, and we did in the written report, we'll do here, summarize for folks what are the key elements of this citizens initiative. It's a rent, it contains both rent stabilization and eviction protections language in one ordinance. It would remove the two ordinances that are currently in the municipal code that the city council adopted and replace them with one initiative. Just as your municipal code, your ordinances are subject to the Costa Hawkins Act. So too with this initiative, the Costa Hawkins Act established uh a number of rules around rent stabilization. Uh, one of the most notable being that vacancy control cannot be implemented. Vacancy control was the idea essentially that when units turned over, you could require that they stay at that rent reduced amount and couldn't be moved to market rate. This initiative does adhere to that, just like your municipal code. Uh, it also stipulates that units can only be subjected to rent stabilization if they were built prior to the Costa Hawkins Act being passed. One of the other things that this initiative does is it sets a rollback date essentially by defining an effective date for when the base rate was to be determined for rent. In fact, again, effectively a rollback date, and the date in the initiative is August third two thousand twenty-two. We'll talk about that a little bit. It establishes a cap on rent increases in a twelve-month period of sixty percent of CPI or three percent, whichever is lower. Uh, it creates a public hearing process for a property owner to petition to exceed the cap in order to realize a fair rate of return on rental property with the ruling of the hearing officer then appealable to the city council. And that's a requirement when you put local ordinances into place for rent stabilization. Whoops. And then lastly, uh, one of the things that stood out to staff is it actually nullifies any lease provisions about doing any sort of prorated prorata share of utilities. Meaning that unless individual units are metered, you can't distribute the utility costs on a, we're gonna just take the number of utility, the utility bill and divide it by however many units are out there.
So, so I'm sorry, could you explain that? So what happens to the utility bill then?
That's a good question. I, I think that's something that eventually has to be sussed out as the ordinance is implemented. But what it means is that if I've signed a lease that says that I've agreed to pay some sort of prorated share of utilities, that becomes null and void with the, the ordinance going into.
So, so that means all renters get free utilities?
Uh, I don't think that's what it means, but I'll.
It, uh, there's a, there's a companion piece of this that says that um to charge the tenants for the utilities, the utilities must be separately metered. Um, otherwise, um, they can't, you can't take the total amount of utilities charged and do, and charge it to the tenants on a prorata basis.
So, so let me understand. So if it's not separately metered, then all the tenants get free utilities because you can't do it prorata. Is that right?
That's, that, that, I believe that would be the, the, the baseline understanding of the ordinance as we've read it. We'd need to, you know, we're gonna have to spend a lot more time with many provisions of this ordinance, but that does appear to be the, the primary reading of it.
And, and the alternative is to require landlords to pay the expense of separately metering each unit?
Yes, although if they implemented that, it may well be an expense that they could then use to um submit an application to exceed the rent cap to recover those costs over time.
Okay. Okay.
And Mr. City Manager, on the public hearing and the, you know, having the public hearing and having um the appeal to the city council, can you tell us what current state law is about?
I can tell you what your local ordinance is on the next slide.
Okay, great, thanks.
So highlighted on this slide, we wanted to identify what's currently in your municipal code. So your municipal code is also subject to the Costa Hawkins Act. The municipal code did also set a base rate date that was a bit of a rollback. It was to May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The council will recall that we spent a lot of time recognizing that the law asked the question, when was it reasonable for the entirety of the community to understand you might adopt an ordinance? Uh, when was it reasonable that the entirety of the community um saw on your agenda that you were considering action? And we identified the date of May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. The ordinance argues that the date of August third should be used. That's the date when, at their request, I believe if then council member Candell, that we put this on the agenda because we've had speakers for five straight meetings at Public Comment. I think what that was August third was when it was on the agenda to say, well, what should we do? Because folks have been asking for that.
All right, so, so hang on, let me ask a quick question to our, our city attorney. Hypothetically, there's a rollback date that is just illegal. Right? Because you need some legal grounds to uh, to, to set that date. Do we have any legal requirement not to put on the ballot an illegal ordinance?
You have a ministerial duty um to um either adopt this ordinance or um submit it to the voters. If you believe that um it contains um a vision that is unlawful, the recommended pathway would be to um direct me to um file litigation, to seek a court order, um to uh either um relieve the city council of that ministerial duty if you haven't yet taken it, or um if you have already called the election to rule that the, the ordinance is unlawful and to cancel the election.
And uh, let me ask you this. There are some legal contracts that basically say if any paragraph in this contract is deemed unlawful, the rest of that contract should still be enforceable. Is there anything either in this ordinance or the law of ordinances that, that says that, that if part of an ordinance is unlawful, you, the rest of it is still enforceable?
I'm pulling it up right now, but I believe the ordinance does contain a severability clause, and so if a court agreed that that provision was unlawful, um likely it would strike that provision or modify it and then allow the ordinance to move forward on the ballot um uh with, with the rest of the ordinance intact. Additionally, um I should clarify that um the city council is not the only party that could um file it, direct it or, or authorize litigation to be filed to um either modify the ordinance or have the initiative um taken off the ballot. Private parties with an interest could, could file similar litigation. The city would be, would be um likely named as uh the defendant. The proponents of the initiative would have an opportunity to intervene in the case and um and, and really take the lead in the litigation because as outlined in the report, city council does not have an obligation to defend this legislation, and so if you, particularly if you had informed the court that the, that the city does not intend to offer a vigorous defense of the rollback provision, the proponents would then have a strong interest in intervening to, to argue in favor of it.
Uh, and can I ask you, uh, if there were a private party uh who felt there may be some unconstitutional or illegal uh provisions in this ordinance, uh, and they were to speak to the city attorney about that, would the city attorney be able to have that conversation as an employee of the city, or would that be some type of conflict?
That would be a conflict. I, I, as a city attorney, I need to, to advise the city council and the city staff on this matter. Because you have ministerial duties, um I need to remain um neutral to, to a significant degree. Obviously, following any direction that the city council gives me, but um I, I, I can't give legal advice to a private party about, about the legality of provisions um of uh, of a proposed ordinance.
Okay. And, and could you uh, do me a favor? And I don't know if it's possible during this meeting, or, or you need to after, if you can check if there is a severability.
I'll, I'll do it as the city manager continues with his report and, and confirm that. I, I'm fairly confident it does.
Can I ask a question on, oh, do you have one too, Gabe? Uh, on this particular, on this area? Because I apologize, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but um when this was initially reviewed, um it, when you're talking about the administrative review followed by.
I didn't actually talk about it.
Well, we haven't gotten there yet.
So all I've talked about are the first two bullets.
Got it.
Yeah.
The, the ordinance does contain a severability clause for the benefits of the public and the members of the council who are not attorneys or, or not deeply versed in these things, as the mayor said. A severability clause um in one form or another states that uh typically states that if a court rules that a portion of legislation is legally um invalid, that the remainder of the portions that are valid should continue to be implemented, and so um in light of the mayor's hypothetical, if the rollback, if, if, if somebody wanted to challenge the rollback provision, they could go to court and say, this should be, this is, this is invalid. They could try to, try to challenge the entire ordinance. But if the ma, but if the only issue that was raised was the rollback provision, it's likely, but not guaranteed, that a court would say, all right, I agree the rollback, if the court agreed, they would, would invalidate the rollback provision, but allow the rest of the ordinance to appear on the ballot.
Thank you for that speedy uh uh looking at the, the ordinance. Sorry, uh, Mr. City Manager, sorry to interrupt.
So uh, third point that we mentioned is the rent cap. So just a reminder, cap is not a hard cap. It means that uh in order to raise the rent above the cap, you need to submit an application and argue why your fair rate of return is denied by that cap number. So the cap in the citizens initiative is sixty percent of CPI or three percent, whichever is lower. Currently in our municipal code, it's five percent plus CPI or seven percent, whichever is lower. So um the linkage that I want to make though to the prior point is if there is a rollback provision, then staff will need to notify landlords that they'll have to do some sort of crediting back to a rollback date. Should that occur? Uh, then um the process for fair rate of return, the way we structured it in our ordinance was to try to limit sort of the, dealt, the difference between the way the state law contemplated that things be administered, recognizing that there is no fair rate of return application process in the Tenant Protection Act. So what we tried to do here was make it mostly an administrative process. So an applicant comes in, they file application, it gets reviewed under procedures in the municipal code by staff. Staff issues a determination. Um, and then if either party doesn't like the staff determination, it can be appealed to a rent review board, which you're, you are to schedule to a point. Going back to what the initiative says, the initiative says that the actual uh review of the application will take place in a public hearing by a pub, by a hearing officer. And so um everything ha, the public can participate in that process. Uh, and that's just to go through the review, and then once the review concludes and the hearing officer issues an opinion, that opinion can be appealed and that the city council will sit as the appellate board for that.
All right, can I, you okay if I interrupt while you're going or you wanna wait? So, so uh, who is the hearing officer?
So the ordinance talks about a number of staff resources or supplemental resources that need to be part of the team and generally leads to the discretion of the city manager to make some arrangements. So there'll be a hearing officer. Um, most of the ordinance is built like this. Retain a third party, neutral third party to serve as a hearing officer.
Okay, and uh, a question, and let me know if you want me to save this till, till a later part of the discussion, but I am imagining that with such a low uh cap, that there are going to be a ton of appeals, because as we mentioned earlier, even if you want to set up separate meters, that's gonna put you over, you know, what your reasonable rate of return is. Uh, and because of all those appeals, I'm assuming it's gonna be very expensive for the city who has to pay for all those appeals, and uh they, I get, that gets appealed to the city council. Is there some type of cost estimate to what it's gonna cost the city if, if this happens?
So we tried to give some rough first year estimates, because I generally agree with you that the lower the rent cap is, the more likely we're going to see applications to exceed the cap. But it's a, it's a great unknown. Uh, I suppose if you're speaking right now to a Larkspur taxpayer, then you might give them comfort in the fact that the ordinance is built around the concept that all of the costs will be recovered through the rental registry program. Now, if your goal right now is to be speaking to the Larkspur property owner contingent that rents properties, you can't really offer them comfort because the ordinance says the rental registry is an annual per unit charge on rented units. So essentially, what the ordinance does is say that uh the cost will be recovered by charging an annual registration fee to, to a landlord, to a property owner.
Okay, but, and I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand this. So we're gonna charge the landlords the fee of the hearings, but that's gonna make their profits lower, which is gonna make it even more likely that they're going to have to appeal because now their, the possibility of them recovering a profit is gonna go down because they're paying to be, you know, paying all these fees, which is going to make them appeal more, which is gonna make the fees go even higher. Is that kind of the, the cycle that we're talking about?
Uh, so wouldn't, in the mechanics, I would leave it for simplicity's sake as in order to rent a unit in Larkspur, you're going to have to pay a fee. And the fee will be designed in a way so that it captures what the city's spending on all its costs. So it's not so much necessarily about individual actions within the process. So that's just to clarify on that point. Going to your larger question, um, great debate exists out in the world of rent stabilization theory and practicality of how the property owner community recovers this expenditure. As we talked about during our exploration, some ordinances do specifically say that up to fifty percent of that fee can be charged directly into the rent. But most ordinances either don't allow that transfer, um explicitly don't allow it, or they uh are silent on the point. Regardless, it's one of the arguments that many people make that that ultimately drives up market rate. Because since I can't recover what I'm having to spend necessarily through the, the unit that's subject to rent stabilization, I'm gonna have to go get it somewhere.
And, and isn't another way to take units off the market and make condos and stuff like that, so there's less of a rental market?
I'm not in a position to, to tell you one way or the other in answer to that.
Okay.
Question.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We've, we're still on page two, so so let's uh, let's chat, it is, could be a long one, so let's uh, I'll, I'll stop and, and please keep going.
Sure. So um, and then as we mentioned, the, a, a significant difference, it's not present or spoken to in any way in the municipal code, is this issue around the utilities being charged into the rent. So as the city attorney told you, um ultimately metering or sub-metering the property so that you can directly charge your tenants for their utility usage would be a necessity to avoid this problem in the, in the initiative, or challenge, I should say, in the initiative.
Does the citizens initiative define utility charges? Util, what a utility is?
It's a good question.
Because some, I mean, is it garbage, water, power, sewer? I mean.
I'm gonna let the city attorney double check. I'd like to tell you, I digested all of it, but I haven't quite mastered everything yet. Uh, and while he's doing, oh, he found the def, uh, electricity, water, hot water, sewer, refuse removal, telephone, cable, or internet. Oh, and gas, I missed gas. Yeah.
I'm sorry, for clarification, um, how would you separately meter a refuse? Does everyone have their own can?
Or internet for that matter.
I so cans, yes, I think the answer to your question is yes. You'd probably have to look at.
So if you have a dumpster, you have to go to separate cans for everybody?
Okay, I could see that being one approach.
And, and then I thought you said telephone. Now, that's probably not a big issue because of landlines and cell phones, but um in principle, a landline would have to be separately metered.
That's how the ordinance reads.
Okay.
I, you know, I, I suspect you have a lot of folks in the audience who later can speak to the practicalities.
Um, and while, while we're interrupting so much, I, I just um thought I'd be part of. Yeah, yeah. Um, it makes, makes it more lively, but, but I read ahead and I just wanted to make sure. I didn't see the comparison on applicability, like exemption ADUs and, and, uh, you know, those, I, did, did you include that in your analysis?
Uh, I didn't go into much detail about the exemptions. But generally this ordinance had tried, it appeared, I have to double check, but I believe they generally tried to follow on the rent stabilization side, your preferences for exemptions, but not on the eviction protection side. I think nothing's exempted.
Okay. And may, maybe if you could just, you know, at some point fill us in because, you know, one of the real voices we were trying to, um, listen to was, you know, not to penalize mom and pops. So, you know, we had specifically exempted ADUs. We specifically exempted single families, specifically exempted duplexes, especially if there was one occupant. I just wanted to know if that, you know, the way you've done this so much.
I, I agree, but you know, uh, to be honest, our municipal code is somewhat symbolic in the exemption of ADUs because it specifically says you had to be permitted as an ADU, which had to have happened after the Costa Hawkins Act date. So by definition, they were exempt. So part of that was to put an underscore on the fact that ADUs were exempt. But they, any, any true ADU is going to have been constructed after the, the ninety.
Okay. So just say duplexes because that, that was one point. I think that's in, um, in, in the current, uh, language. Thank you.
Okay, there's still more key elements to discuss though. Now remember this initiative now takes the, the, uh, rent stabilization and eviction protections and puts them together. Uh, and definitely interweaves them a little, uh, more thoroughly than our approach in our current municipal code. So, uh, one of the things that's distinct here is it adds noticing requirements to at-fault evictions that are above what's required in state law. So if you have a tenant that's violating their lease, it's essentially building in more time that you need to notice under certain circumstances and allow a greater period for curing those violations. As a preview to when I bring on the comparison, we, we're, we avoided diving into anything in this arena and left it all to state law for the municipal code.
Quick, quick question. Um, the rent stabilization purely doesn't apply to properties before Costa Hawkins. However, something like expanded notice requirements for evictions, does that apply to all rentals?
Yeah.
So, so, so this ordinance, uh, would, would, part of the ordinance would apply to certain units and part of it would apply to other units.
Yeah. And, and I don't recall the exact language, but if you're reading the definitions, they go so far as to distinguish between two types of rental units. Units that are subject to the entirety of the program, meaning rent stabilization and eviction protections, and those units that are only subjected to the eviction protection portion. Then it's essentially that divider line about Costa Hawkins.
Okay. Thank you.
So then for no-fault eviction, so that's an eviction under one of four categories where essentially there's a, a, a decision on the part of the property owner to evict for a cause, something that, um, was outside of the ability of the, uh, tenant to deal with. So, um, one of the way, one of the longstanding ways to do a no-fault eviction is I want to put a family member into my rental unit, for example. Now there's an exemption for certain vulnerable populations, elderly, terminally ill. There's a grace period for school-aged children, uh, to protect them in there. Uh, and then we, this, this ordinance now has a thirty-six month right to return period. So if the conditions that created the eviction, um, are no longer in place and, and the property owner wants to put it back on the market, they're going, in the first thirty-six months, they'd have to offer it back to the tenant at the rent that was being paid at the time of eviction with an allowance for rent adjustments that would have been allowable.
And I'm sorry, is the burden on the landlord to find the tenants and notify them?
So that's where we get into this, this, uh, somewhat gray area within the ordinance. So I think generally the assumption is that the city would be facilitating finding to some degree. But yes, ultimately the, a lot of the noticing is a burden on the, on the property owner.
But, but, and I'm sorry, did, did you say that the city now not only has hearings and appellate hearings, but we're also getting into detective business of finding out where people live and notifying the property owners that they can tell them?
So the practical way this tends to play out in most of the state is that the city staff, and we talked about this in the staff report, is now going to have a much higher, uh, requirement in terms of monitoring and recording and maintaining a database. So we understand what is and isn't happening whenever an eviction is triggered. What most cities that do this process end up doing is they have a centralized posting location so that they let a tenant know that this is where you would go to keep an eye out if a, a property that you had been renting goes back on the market. I don't have a sense yet of what the volume of that activity completely would be, but I, I do feel like this is a considerable administrative burden, not present in the current municipal code.
Thank you.
And there's more of these to come, these, these tracking things. So, um, another no-fault category is the, uh, what's called an Ellis Act eviction. So that's an eviction where you're, as a property owner, exercising your right to take a rental unit off of the market. This is where, one of those significant categories, Mr. Mayor. So, um, this actually has detailed discussion about rights of return at two years after an Ellis, um, Act eviction, at five years after an Ellis Act eviction, and ten years after an Ellis Act eviction. So you got a lot of tracking here that now.
Well, but who is responsible for that tracking?
So again, it's a balanced, if you read in the ordinance, there's some requirements for the, the property owner. There's some requirements that essentially the way it's written, I interpret as being the city's requirements.
Okay, so a tenant moves out of state. It's either the city or the property owner has to somehow find, hire a private investigator? I mean,
No, no, no. That's it. So there are elements of California law that say that you only have to make a good faith effort to do noticing within a practical reality. So again, getting back to this concept that the way it works out for a lot of agencies is they create a centralized noticing board, so to speak. And there is some requirement on the part of the former tenant to keep an eye out for a notice. Two years, uh, maybe they're looking ten. Yeah, I think it'd be tough to find somebody after ten years. So. But that language is there. Now, again, I, I should note, a lot of this is modeled off of other cities. This is very similar to the ordinance that's in place in Fairfax. It's not that different than a lot of provisions that are in ordinances and other communities. So we have agencies to talk to about the way they overcome.
Fairfax is in, hasn't actually gone into effect yet though, because.
It has actually. That's a misunderstanding. It's in effect, but it's going on the ballot to be removed. So. Uh, again, let's compare it to our municipal code. So, um, we are silent on the issue of at-fault eviction. We added nothing other than to reiterate the state code of what an at-fault eviction was, is. And then for the, uh, idea of when you have, have a right to return, if you've been evicted under the circumstance that a family member might move in, it's our ordinance, uh, our municipal code says twelve months. Uh, again, this is three times as long. And then, again, we are completely silent on these provisions about the Ellis Act evictions. There's still more key elements. Uh, there's a lot to this initiative. Uh, for no-fault evictions for substantial renovations, um, which is one you actually see a lot in the press. This is the one that can be, uh, controversial about what constitutes a substantial renovation. It basically says that if you're going to do a substantial renovation, you're going to need to invite the evicted tenant to return once you're done at the rent that they were paying before they were evicted. Plus any allowable annual adjustment. And this is why it gets a lot of criticism. I'll just jump in here that this is a deterrent. This will cause a property owner to not be as interested in investing in their property. Whether that's true, I'm not saying, I'm saying this is a commonly voiced concern. The ordinance sets the compensation for a no-fault eviction at the greater of the equivalent of four months of rent or eight thousand dollars. Um, and it adds that specified vulnerable populations would get an additional four thousand dollars, elderly, terminally ill, terminally ill. In particular. And then this is where we get again into some fun new tracking possibilities for the city. If you're doing a limited term or short-term renovation, uh, the ordinance talks about, uh, per diem allowances to, uh, compensate the tenant while the short-term renovations or repairs are taking place. Uh, in talking to many cities, that is definitely an area where at times there've been disputes between tenants and property owners that the cities have had to monitor and intervene.
Gave you the question?
Yeah, just, just a clarification again on applicability. So, you know, I just got so many letters and, and concerns. So on, on the compensation point, so if, you know, just hypothetically, you have a duplex and you want to move back into the one unit that you're renting out, then you're going to be paying up to twelve thousand dollars. There's no exemption to that, to duplexes.
You're going to be paying under this formula, whatever.
Yeah. So eight thousand, um, yeah, I guess, uh, the, the greater of, uh, fourth, so it's, it's a minimum of eight thousand dollars. And, you know, twelve thousand or it could be above depending on the monthly rent. But my point in that is, is again, on the question of exemptions, so duplexes would not be exempted from this or small.
That's correct, but I'd have to double check. I don't know that our municipal code exempts duplexes from this particular.
Right. So this is on the just cause versus the, the rental cap.
And state law doesn't exempt them from the one-month requirement that's in state law.
Correct. Okay.
I'm sorry, what's the one-month requirement in state law?
State law requires that you compensate with one month's rent if you use a no-fault eviction provision.
And, and what is this?
So that's the formula that's in the ordinance is four times the monthly rent or, or eight thousand dollars, whichever is greater.
Got it. So, so that, that's, it's not just for an eviction, that goes for a temporary eviction also?
No, no, sorry. Uh, Councilmember Paulson went back to the, to the compensation.
I'm, I'm on the last point that you.
You're, you're already to the different one.
Sorry. Yeah. So, 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 so you, hypothetically, you're a landlord who for some reason under this ordinance decides you want to make Larkspur a better place and upgrade your property. You are going to pay for the cost of upgrading the property. You're going to pay for your tenant to live someplace else while you're upgrading the property. And then the tenant comes back and pays the prior rent for the upgrade. Is that accurate?
Um, so that's the first bullet, the substantial remodel. The third bullet is what the ordinance talks about as, uh, repairs or minor remodeling. So it, it has more to do with, I need you to move out so I can fix something. And you can't be in the unit while I do that. And so then it gets in all these details about how I need to compensate you while you're off-site, uh, on a per diem basis.
Got it. So it's just not an upgrade, it's more of a fix?
It's a little ambiguous. There's some ambiguity there, but generally I'd call it more a provision for fixing the unit when you have to ask the person to leave temporarily.
Okay.
But, but this again is something that both state law and our municipal code are silent on.
All right. I have a question. What happens if the property owner chooses not to fix the unit then? And says, all right, so.
I don't have any answer to that. I will tell you, uh, it's pretty clear if you've been following the Fairfax debates, the first and the third bullet point are probably the most talked about in their public discussions.
So, so yeah, so I, but I'm, but I'm sorry, I, I, I still don't understand, is there a requirement with a landlord? Let's say somebody's got a, a leaky something or moldy carpet.
You do have a requirement to maintain health and safety of the unit. So yes, if, if, if the condition in the unit necessitated by law that it be repaired, then you have a requirement. Do you have a requirement to put a, uh, an upgraded appliance in? Not necessarily, but maybe you might if, if you were so inclined. I don't know. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, and then whereas we're silent on, on sort of codifying protections and rights of tenants, the ordinance, the initiative is pretty, goes into pretty extensive detail to talk about what the rights of tenants are. I didn't enumerate them in the report. They're, they're free to read. Um, they don't have, in my opinion, a direct impact on the city or the, uh, administration. They, the, the rental community might have a different opinion about what's the codification of some of those rights might mean. Uh, and then there's the sunset provision. And of course, our municipal code followed the state law for a sunset provision. So then to give you the comparison in detail, again, um, we're completely silent on this issue of substantial renovations and a right of return. And then, um, our formula for compensation on a no cause, a no-fault eviction is the greater of three months of rent or five thousand dollars. And we have a provision for sp, certain vulnerable populations of additional three thousand dollars. We don't have any discussion about short-term relocation of tenants. And then we again are mostly silent on those different various protections and rights of tenants, and we do have a sunset provision. So why are we here? We're actually here to provide feedback on eight factors that are in the election code, section ninety-two, twelve. And they're provided in the staff report. I have them up on the screen as well. Probably the most significant one is the fiscal impact to the city of the, uh, initiative. And so I'm going to talk quite a bit about that one right now. The current program, our program in the municipal code, uh, builds on state law and its administrative tasks are primarily around the review of any fair rate of return applications that come in, and eventually the development of a rental registry. We tried to tailor our program to keep our administrative role as modest as possible. The initiative program is just far more expansive than that and requires a lot of, uh, a lot, it's going to cause a lot of work for the city staff. There's just no way getting around that. Some of the key things are facilitating the fair rate of review, a fair rate of return review process, which as I noted, now you're bringing in a hearing officer and you're holding these public hearings for the review process. It's supposed to be facilitated by staff. Uh, and then eventually, uh, facilitating and distributing the determinations. Managing the rental registry is true in both of them, but as we started to allude to, that rental registry is actually becoming a misnomer. The software that we've purchased recognizes that there are communities with the levels of tracking that we're starting to talk about. So we will have the resources to do it, but we're talking about a much more populated database than, than our current municipal code would require staff to maintain. And then because, as I'm alluding to, it's partly that's because we'll have to track the nature and form of different types of evictions. We'll have to be monitoring all these different rate of, uh, right of return dates and making sure that people receive whatever notice the initiative requires so that they have an opportunity to make their consideration. It's also some interesting provisions in the ordinance about the staff, uh, through the building official, potentially needing to intercede to ensure that tenants are treated correctly during any sort of remodel or repair work. And when you start to read about it, the idea that you're essentially going to have to have the minister of this program coordinate with the building official, that's a lot of staff time. That's somewhat duplicative in my mind, but it's actually codified in this ordinance that, that'll take place. Uh, and then as the mayor already mentioned, uh, we do think that this lower rent cap is likely to lead to far more applications for a fair rate of return. So that's a lot more work period. We've tried to, throughout this process, when we were building toward the ordinances that the council adopted and now to get as refined numbers as we can, it's hard because of, as we've mentioned, I think the most honest staff report that we reviewed from another community, flat out said, it's going to take two years to know exactly how much it costs to do all of these things. So we know what we're sort of estimating we need for our current program. Uh, and that's a. And that's a roughly two hundred fifty thousand to three hundred thousand dollar investment. It's a little bit higher in the first year to get the software up and running and implemented. That comes down about thirty grand after we do that. But generally, that that's going to be the range. Initially, we think the intensification here of this program is going to require us to bring in a management level housing specialist. Somebody who can really administer this program. And so when we worked up the numbers around that, the intensification of legal support that we anticipate under this initiative. Our first year costs, we're now estimating are more in line with with four hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. I want to emphasize, this is my estimate of first year. I it's I would expect costs to grow some under either program. I think under the initiative, they'll grow more significantly as the.
Can you give us an estimate of what you think the costs would grow?
So I'll use real world best I can. We've spoken a lot about the city of Oxnard, which was one of the first that we saw that tried to take the Tenant Protection Act and just kind of layer in some local. Regulation, and we tried that same approach. They went from one staff person for their program when they launched it. To one staff person with two administrative support people underneath.
What was their rental cap?
Sorry?
What was their rental cap?
Theirs was four percent, I think.
Okay.
A fixed number.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, so I mean, I'm looking at your estimates here and, for instance, the software. Costs are the same under both scenarios, but you've just said that our. Tracking of the two year, five year, ten year tails on some of these provisions is going to require significantly more. Administration. So where are the costs of tracking all that? You're going to need some sort of software or something. How can the cost be the same for that underneath the current scenario versus?
That software package is the Microsoft of this world. It's it's a it's a one huge program with numerous modules and. The modules we are licensing will allow us to do all this tracking. We just hadn't planned on building it. Up. We hadn't planned on staff having to then actually do the data management. The data management's built into staff time and resources, but the the cost to have the software stays the same regardless of whether it's under the current program or the new program.
So we don't have to incur any additional costs for that?
That's not our understanding. Now, we might have to incur briefly some additional support to make sure we understand modules we weren't necessarily intending to learn a lot about. But it's this big data management software package that you tailored to your to your agency's needs.
I mean, it just feels like, you know, we are going to have, we are going to incur costs of just city council time. If any appeals that might be coming, I mean, and that's none of that's factored in here. There's also provision where we're required to provide legal services for people for low income residents. I don't think that's factored in this in your estimate. I feel like. I think your estimate may not accurately reflect what some of the the citizens initiative might might be requiring of us.
Well, again, I respectfully disagree because this is only my first year estimates. I and again, want to reiterate what I said a few minutes ago. I don't think. I think the numbers for the initiative program will will go up as we build out the program. But I think in the first year, these are very realistic numbers. I I can't, I could just sort of say to you, I think it'll be six hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand, eight hundred thousand the following years, but. I don't know until we actually get into the weeds of dealing with the program. And that's always been our challenge with estimating this.
Could I ask a question? Based on other jurisdictions and their curve of costs over time. Is it possible to look at another jurisdiction like Oxnard and say, hey, it went up twenty percent in year two or, you know, something like that? Because I have a feeling the voters are going to want to know what the actual cost is going to be of this because, you know, most likely they're footing the bill one way or another. You know, so. I is there some way for, you know, it's obviously not tonight, but if for a future meeting or or some way for us to get a little bit more information. About projections of like five years out, what this is going to cost us?
I can ask other cities, but you're talking about a fairly significant apples to oranges comparison because. Every community is going to have a different mix of rental units and every community have a different. Demand from their constituency of what the level of engagement needs to be. And. Also, some of the communities we interviewed are mira are. Folding this operation into a housing unit, like a fully staffed. It's either subunit planning or its own standalone department that works on housing. There just aren't a lot of cities our size. That are being asked to launch this level of program.
So while I understand it's apples to oranges. I think our voters are entitled to. An educated guess, you know, some type of estimate, even if it's rough numbers. I I just think that they need to know, you know, even if it's not exact, you know. Some type of ballpark of what, hey, you know, five years from now, our estimate, you know, obviously, we can't predict the future. But, you know, our projections are, you know, it's going to go up X percent or whatever it happens to be. And you may you may tell me. I'm not in a position to do that. I'm not an economist, but maybe if.
I'm going to answer it this way. I am not going, I'm not willing to do that under Elections Code ninety two twelve. If you would like to have a separate item outside of the bounds of the Elections Code.
Okay.
Where you ask me to guess at things, I'll I'll do that. This code's pretty specific and I'm not supposed to do. The exercise the way you're describing.
I appreciate your sharing that and we would not ask you to do anything you're not supposed to do. Maybe at a separate time, we can get some projections from.
I would be happy to do.
Thank you.
I would like to go really quickly on that point. One thing to keep in mind that we're experimenting with that a lot of the communities we talked to didn't do. You know, we're experimenting with using Echo to serve as our liaison. A lot of the communities we talked to. Bring that in house and they hire a second or third staff person just to do the liaison work that we're hoping to achieve at a more cost effective level through Echo.
Okay, thank you.
Well, the other the other way to look at this in terms of costs is we should look at it on a per unit basis because there are a lot of jurisdictions for us in San Francisco. You know, you can probably go to. You know, they're they're a much larger city, but if you looked at all of their costs in total. You know, we should be able to get some sense of here are the things that they're spending that they've had to spend money on. To implement a similar type of ordinance. And see how that that might impact our numbers and then gear it so that it is on a per unit basis. Because I agree, we're a much smaller jurisdiction. We only have thirty three hundred units. But we're talking about spending five to seven hundred thousand dollars, you know, administering a program for thirty three hundred units. I mean, it just feels like it's. It's a lot of money.
Just on, you know, kind of a similar line. So I don't know ninety two twelve. But, you know, it with an apples to oranges comparison, is it okay just to say what the prices of apples are, even if you have oranges? You know, just to say, hey, this is what it costs and, you know, we're an orange or an apple, but, you know, or is that seen as as misleading or somehow in violation?
Well, it's just under under the Elections Code, I'm supposed to be putting out information that I can say I feel a hundred percent confident in. And I don't know that. That's why I'm saying if you want to do a separate exercise outside of the purpose of this impact report under that code section. I'll be happy to bring you lots of different programs. I would probably say not to use any city that had rent control before the Costa Hawkins Act. Because it's just not a realistic comparison. So San Francisco, Berkeley, Santa Monica, these cities have totally. You know, they're they're programs go back to the seventies when the rules were very different. I think we'd want to look at. Cities that have put rent stabilization in place over the last ten to fifteen years. That would be probably a better comparison for where costs are likely to be. But I appreciate your point. We could definitely try to get some data about how many units are they administering in their program. Okay, so. With respect to where do these costs go and how do we recover them? Eventually, we'll have a rental registry. In place and then the council have the option to adopt a fee. To registry units and that would be used to recover the cost. Our current ordinance leaves you tremendous latitude about what you do there. You could decide you don't want to recover any of the costs. You're willing to just. Administer the ordinance through the general fund, or you could decide you want to fully burden the rental registry fee with the cost of the program. That's. Was designed so that you have that discretion. You don't have that discretion under the initiative program. The initiative program starts with a minimum first year fee that I suspect they chose because they know it's defensible because it's going to be less than our true cost. And then it actually, and I think the city attorney helped me layer some language in the impact report. It's uncertain about maybe some of the legality around this, but it effectively reads that it compels you to recover your costs fully. By transferring all these costs or recovering all these costs through that rental registry fee. These are speculative first year fee costs for units that would be. Subject to both the rent stabilization portions of the program and the eviction protections portion of the program. Most cities. Do a tiering approach and units that are post Costa Hawkins and only subject to eviction protections pay a different lower fee. To be registered because they're not receiving the full benefit benefit of the program. That's how the legal thought process goes. So we didn't calculate out that tier because that was that'd be something we'd have to work out as we went through a fee study. But we used the ballpark number of two thousand units. We're still cleaning up some. Data issues in our data and the assessor's data. We've always said that we expect our final base for the program is somewhere between eighteen hundred and two thousand units. And this is one that got some discussion during the municipal code review, and that's whether or not there's potential for loss of property tax revenue. When that comment was made during the public discussions about the about rent stabilization and eviction protections. Staff interviewed the county assessor's office and asked for a brief explanation of how do rental units get assessed? And what was the likelihood that someone could apply for and get their property assessed downward as a result of rent stabilization? So the way it was explained to us by the county assessor's office is that. They actually work with the property owner, particularly of a multi unit property at the time of acquisition to understand the pro forma. And this is proprietary information that the property owner shares with the assessor to understand the pro form at the time of acquisition. And so the assessor informed us that a valid reason to apply for reassessment. Is if you are no longer able to realize the pro forma because of a regulatory change. Rent stabilization. So. Whether or not that would be approved is a different question, just that it would be a valid reason to apply, but. The assessor staff that was present at the meeting told us that they said they thought that there was a path where a property owner could potentially get the property reassessed downward. So that means that very possibly particularly for. Any large multifamily and multi unit property that was acquired in the in, you know, in the relatively recent past, so they would have had a higher assessment. They might have a path toward getting assessed downward, and that would result in a loss of property tax revenue, not only for the city, but for all the jurisdictions that are affected.
And could you? Again, I think the voters are looking for numbers. Is this something that? We can extrapolate and say, you know, for the larger. Complexes in Larkspur, we know what their property tax is. We know if and we could just say if. They try to get their their property valuation lowered and if they are successful. And their property is now devalued by, and we come up with a reasonable number, ten percent. Well, how that would affect revenues for the city?
I could go explore that. It'd be difficult to translate that into true dollars because the way that the assessments are done, I mean, I. I'd essentially have to get the assessed value of, let's say, an apartment complex. And then I would have to speculate at what may or may not happen if they applied to have their property taxed.
Well, I'm sure they will apply, you know, whether whether it actually goes through or not, I don't know. But I mean. I I just, I want the taxpayers to understand the risk. And it doesn't have to be, hey, this is certainly going to happen, but I want voters to know, hey, if you choose to do this. You are assuming the risk that this might happen. And if this does happen, this is what it's going to cost you. Is that is that possible?
I honestly don't think I could do that other than use a completely hype, just, you know, hypothetical. Property X is valued at Y. Property, now it's valued at Z. What does that mean? But I don't think you could do any real world because I wouldn't have access to the proprietary data necessary. And I'd have to have the assessor's office willing to participate and tell me what the potential downward valuations would be.
So so let me ask you this, asking for your opinion. If our goal is to have informed voters. Right? And we want to give them the best information that we can so that they can make an informed decision whether this is something they want to vote for. And we have all these costs out there that we say, you know what, it's it may happen, you know, you know. If if we don't want to blind sign voters and have them vote for something and then come back a couple of years from now and go, oh, my God, I didn't know it was going to be this. How do we? Inform them of this potential risk without being able to give them exact numbers? How how do you recommend we do that? And Mr. City Attorney, if you have an idea, I mean, I just, it doesn't feel like like. It doesn't feel like we are doing our job. If we don't inform voters that, hey, you know what? You know, you can vote for this if you want to, but this is what it could potentially cost you. If we don't do that and they don't know what it could cost them, and then it ends up costing them that they're going to come back to us and say, why didn't anybody tell us? That all of a sudden, you know, we're paying a million dollars a year or our general fund is losing a million dollars a year. If I had known that, I would have voted differently, but nobody told me. How do we? How do we prevent that from happening?
I don't have a good answer for you, Mr. Mayor. Let me let me illustrate this a little more. So my understanding from my interviews. Talking to the county assessor's office is that there's a proprietary pro forma that they are privy to when they make an assessment of a multi unit property. They know the assumed rent increase is possible and they know the assumed rate of return. That's my understanding, right? I can't ever see that information, so I can't say. With any knowledge if. The ordinance's new rent cap represents a problem. Because I don't know what that pro forma assume, right? So I can't tell the voters numbers because I would have to have all that information.
So let me let me ask you, let me let me ask you a follow up question, which is hypothetically, if there were owners of multi. Unit. Properties that were willing to cooperate and provide information to the city. Would the city then be able to take that information and come up with some potential numbers that might be useful to the voters?
Possibly, but I think a simpler path to informing the voters is the city is validating that this could really happen. And property owners are more than capable of participating in the election and saying what they think will happen. With their individual properties and they could say the city already told you I could do this and I'm willing to tell you I'm going to do it.
Okay, sorry for dominating this. Anyway, more comments that. Okay. Sorry for dominating this. Anyway, more comments that other people on the council want to jump in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I agree with your questions, broader perspective. It's how do we respond? I mean, it sounds to me that we, there's nothing we can do to take, keep it off, keep this citizen's initiative off the ballot. Like, that's not, that's not one of our options. Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes, this is a ministerial action because the proponents received the legally required number of signatures on the petition. The city council's only options at this point, having received the 9212 report are either to adopt the ordinance or to submit it to the voters.
Okay, but if we, it sounds like, you know, barring adoption, we vote to put it on the ballot, then it's how can we respond so that to Mayor Candell's point, that we allow citizens to learn about what it's exactly in this story. Because we can't rely on people to read through a hundred page document. It's gotta be, you know, we have to be able to educate people on what's in it and what are the costs to our city if such an ordinance is, you know, passes or such an initiative passes. And so what are our options? Or what can we do as city council to just help educate people about what some of the consequences are?
I, I've got a personal answer since I'm already holding the microphone. Just, this is just more about the boundaries of what's, of what you can do, the legal boundaries. So there are provisions of state law and a significant number of cases, including California Supreme Court cases that tell us that a city can use public funds to provide voters with impartial information about a measure that's on the ballot. It has to be non-argumentative and it has to be factual. And all of that is subject to what the California Supreme Court has stated as a test of the style, tenor and timing of the information. So the style and tenor have, the style has to be consistent with cities' normal communications. The tenor has to be the same as typical city communications. And the timing component means that the closer it is to when voters now have ballots in their hands or actually election day, the higher scrutiny that the court's going to apply to whether or not this is impermissible campaigning as opposed to appropriate informational, educational efforts. So as to sort of use the example that the mayor was just discussing about the potential revenue impacts to property tax from appeals. In addition to everything that the city manager said, what I would add is that there's going to be a component of it that would be speculation. We can caveat that as much as we want to, that the numbers are, you know, our best guess based on these facts. Be very even-handed in the presentation of the information, but ultimately it's going to be speculative because you, you don't know how many cases will actually be filed. If you try to provide a number that, that expresses, well, we think this is the, 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 if, if every property owner that's subject to this appealed, this is what we think the loss of revenue would be. That kind of approach might draw a complaint in, up to and including litigation, arguing that the city council is attempting to tilt the playing field in the election by, by using public resources to inject scare tactics into the election rather than being informative. I'm not suggesting in any way that I think that's what would, what, what this city council and the city staff would actually be doing. But it is something that, that exposes the city to that kind of a complaint the farther you go in attempting to provide that kind of information.
One more question. Actually, I'll rephrase that if I have a lot. My next question is, I heard somebody mention at some point that if it's something extreme that might bankrupt the city, that there's a different standard that we use. If we were to use our best guess calculations and estimate it's going to cost the city a million dollars a year, you know, to, you know, between the lost revenues, you know, from property taxes, between the implementation and that our city doesn't have the resources to deal with that. Where, where is the line of, I mean, does it have to bankrupt us next year? For it to, to be, come under that clause? Or can we say, hey, projecting out five or 10 years, our city can be bankrupt if we pass this?
So I think you'd have a hard time making that statement in this case because the vast majority of costs that are clear in the ordinance, the ordinance says you shall go recover those by charging this rental, this rental registry fee. And so I think you have a hard time arguing that it's truly a threat to the city's balance sheet because the city should be able to go recover all of its costs. So I think going to the city attorney's comments, you'd drift into this area where you might expose the city to questions about using scare tactics. On the property tax question, the two points I didn't get to make that I did want to emphasize too is I think the assessor is always going to have a hard time reviewing these applications because the assumption is that you won't be able to exceed the cap. But you, if you have a valid application, you will presumably be able to exceed the cap and for that year to recover some of your construction costs or whatever it was that you encumbered. And then secondly, we did ask during the debates that were occurring before, we did ask other communities if this phenomenon had taken place. And no one could tell us that it had. Now, I think there's some variables in play. I don't know how many significant, large, pre-Costa Hawkins complexes are being purchased at significant prices that cause significant upward reassessment, right? So I don't, I don't have good data. Nobody I talked to said that that had happened in their community to, to a number where that, that caused them to go, oh, that could be significant. And then the second thing is, I don't know in those communities if those rent caps and the way those applications are being processed has resulted in property owners being able to realize a fair rate of return or not. So I just want to make sure we're clear on those two points.
Is the bankrupting the city kind of like the only exception to this? I mean, if, if, let's say hypothetically, we're not talking about rent stabilization. It's something else that would affect, you know, the character of the city. You know, if somebody did an ordinance that says, you know, again, I, I don't know, just something extreme. They were like, dude, that, that would make it so Larkspur would no longer be Larkspur. And i- is there any kind of exception like that or is it because it's?
I don't think you, I don't think you could deny putting it on the ballot for that sort of thought process. I think now we're going into what the council, mayor may or may not want to say, independent of the 9212 process. I think if the council in subsequent meetings wants to make statements about what you think the effects are outside the bounds of those eight factors in the election code, that's a different conversation that we should have on a different night.
Okay, and, and on that note, and if you want to discuss on a different night, that's fine. The question is, you had mentioned that the danger was using city funds to take a position. If we as a council are making our 300 bucks a month and we come out with a statement regarding this ordinance, is that using city funds to take a position?
So there's probably a few things now that I want to add, just add some information to. So, but I'll take that one first. So the city council at an agendized meeting where this is one of the items that's on the agenda can adopt a resolution and take a position on this. That's, that's within the bounds of what the courts have said you may do. Additionally, all five, oh, four, sorry. So used to saying five, all four of you are also political actors in addition to being elected officials. You can go campaign on your own time and express your views about this as much as you want to about, about this initiative once it's on the ballot. There's no, just because you're, you're receiving a, a minor salary from the city does not convert your words into a city speech. You can go campaign on your own time, using your own resources to get out whatever information you believe is, is accurate and correct about, about this initiative. So that's, nothing, nothing about your official position precludes you from doing that. The, the, the core issue that the courts have identified is using public resources to, to deliver to members of the public and particularly voters information that could be challenged as campaigning rather than educational. And there's a whole series of cases about this and I've got, I can speak at length about it. But it's, but the main, the main issue there is the expenditure of public funds. I just, I think I also just wanted to touch on briefly on a couple of aspects regarding the just providing the public with information about, well, about the, about the economic impacts. There isn't, there isn't an existing exception to putting a qualified initiative on the ballot that it will bankrupt the city. That's not, that's not an existing rule. What you could be do as a city council hypothetically is again, either decline to put it on the ballot and direct me to go convince a court that you should be relieved of your obligation to do that or put it on the ballot and then direct me to go to court and try to convince the judge that there's some aspect of this that's unlawful. Indirectly, if the, if, if, if we had evidence that we thought was compelling that there would be a, a near-term foreseeable effect of an initiative measure that the city would be incapable of satisfying its economic obligations, that might be, that might be something that we could do because in effect, at that point, the initiative would be interfering with the administrative functions of the city. But I think you can understand, it would have to be very compelling evidence to convince a judge to deprive the voters of an opportunity to vote on something that, that, that voters have qualified through the initiative process. And we'd have to be able to make it not just convincing, but convincing that it was something that was, that was more likely than not to occur in a time period that we, that would, that would prevent the city from taking other steps to take offsetting measures. And then just on the issue of the, the potential action by the assessor. And this, I'm just repeating something now that did come up during the course of the previous conversations, which is that, that property owners who are, who are potentially affected by the rent stabilization provisions have the ability to file a petition to increase rents to offset those costs. The assessor's office should also have to take into account as part of any application to reduce the assessed valuation of property that, that, that the property owners have the ability to exceed the cap through an application process. And I don't know how they'll work out that factor of things in, in making those decisions. So it just makes it even more challenging to, to, to provide information to voters, which I agree. It would be wonderful if we could do it, but it would be difficult for us to project what the potential property tax loss is to the city when this ordinance as proposed includes a mechanism for property owners to get a fair rate of return, which should also affect the assessor's decisions about how to, how and how much to mark down the assessed value of any properties.
Thank you for that. Let me ask a question. I, I know we have some people here for public comment. Would it be okay, let's maybe hold comments at this point, finish the presentation, open it up to the public and then we'll continue our conversation after that. Is that okay with everyone? Okay.
Okay. So again, just to emphasize valid reason to apply. Not sure what would actually happen, but potential loss of property tax is, is a concern. Factors two through seven, we discussed in the staff report. Generally, don't see a lot of impact here. Most of these factors have to do with how would it affect land use? Our one concern would be, we've already, under our own municipal code, gotten a lot of feedback, particularly from single fam, from property owners who are renting single family homes that their eviction protections, in particular, they find onerous and they have, are considering removing their property from the rental market. I think that this ordinance, in my estimation, is more onerous under those complaints. So I think it would only accelerate that phenomenon. And then of course, we noted that if we were to realize the loss of revenue, that would affect the factor that asks us what the impact would be on infrastructure. What we did focus a lot on is factor number eight, which is any matters, the legislative body requests that we consider. So one of the things that you've talked about many times and you alluded to at the last meeting, this is an anti-displacement policy. It is not an affordable housing policy. And I think that's really important for the city to emphasize for the benefit of the voters. That's a generally understood within the academic world and within the practitioner world of rent stabilization and eviction protections is, and in fact, just as a simple matter, some of the most prominent rent stabilization communities in our state still have really high rents for their market rate. And so it's really important to emphasize that what this policy does is it helps somebody in theory, somebody who's in a unit to stay in that unit. One of the things that you asked at the last meeting was what does this mean for the rent cap itself? So in the staff reports, a table, we did a hypothetical, what if the state law, what if the municipal code? And what if this order, initiative had all been in place since 2000? And we provided you what that looks like. But in general, under this ordinance, we can expect that based on historical trends that the rent cap would hover somewhere around 2%. You know, lately with inflation being a little higher, it's been more like 2 and a half percent. And as we've stated numerous times during this presentation, we think that that would result in significantly more applications for a fair rate of return. So that's a lot more work than we envision occurring under the current municipal code. There's a discussion in there that I want to make sure you're aware of that we, we decided to put in to talk about some of the legal, legal issues because you had asked us to take a look at that. And Mr. Woodruff can certainly expand upon that section. But one of the interesting things that, that probably will take time to work through if the initiative were to pass is this distinction of what's considered a power and what's considered a duty. So if it's a duty, we have to do it. If it's a power, we can choose to exercise it. And there's, it's difficult as you go through the language to be entirely certain if the language is written in a way that compels the administration of the ordinance in a particular way. I sort of read it that it does in a lot of respects. And I think there's some legal questions around the ability of the initiative to compel staffing levels, to compel administrative procedures that are not spelled out to end up in an adjudicated form. And so they might be construed as an intrusion on the administration of the city. And that could result in potential challenges to the way to interpret the initiative. There's also, as I mentioned, the language seems to compel or instruct you that you must do cost recovery through the rental registry. It doesn't seem to give you the latitude to decide you don't want to do cost recovery. I think that's questionable whether that's something, whether you can or can't decide to do full cost recovery because you have to balance the interests of the city's general fund against the interests of a particular segment of the business community. And then the way the initiative is written, it really sort of almost suggests that we must hire a program administrator. We must provide this staffing resource. And I think there's some questions again about whether or not an initiative can actually compel us to make those decisions of, of hiring and how we actually staff or administer an ordinance.
And I'm sorry, I know, I know I said I wouldn't ask any questions, but just on that, if we have to hire staff, does that get paid for by the property owners? That we say we're hiring two additional staff and their, you know, ordinance staff and therefore they're, they're covered by that?
So in talking to the cities that administer these programs now, they all pretty much operate on a track your time basis and then build that time to, to defend a fee. As I said, I think you're talking about a full-time person that's a sort of an administrative level person to run the whole program. Different agencies. Different agencies tell us different things, but generally they then do a mix of lower level staff where portions of that staff person's time are being charged to the program. And yes, ultimately recovered through the fee. So ultimately that's being passed through to the property owners.
I'm sorry, just to kind of make sure I'm understanding the drift is, are you saying that these legal issues would expose the initiative if passed, made an ordinance? Or it exposes us, right? I mean, that there, there's an overreach in making powers into duties?
I think that if the initiative passes, then I, Mr. Woodruff said something really important to remember, which is judges tend to like you to let things go to the voters and then the legal issues are sorted out afterwards. So, uh, I think that there are some parties that might challenge certain elements of this or initiative on the grounds that it's not legal in the way it treats their business. I think there are other elements, some of the more protective elements for tenants, that tenants might challenge the city if we chose to interpret the language as being a power and not a duty. Who has their resources and are going to make these sorts of challenges? I don't, I don't know. I, I can't definitively say, yes, there's a legal risk, but I think when we put that section together, what we were trying to highlight for the council based on your discussions is I fully anticipate different parties will challenge different things if this initiative passes. Now, how that gets challenged and what that requires of the city would be to be determined. I don't want to speak out of turn for the city attorney's office, but I believe when this ordinances are challenged, you always have the right to say, we don't intend to defend the ordinance and we'll let the judge decide. So you can curb your costs pretty easily that way.
So hypothetically, if this citizen-driven legislation passes and then it's challenged in court by a property owner or someone else, does the already existing ordinance that we passed or that passed the voters in November or, uh, March of this year, or was it November of last year? Is that overturned or is that put on hold until the legal process goes through? I mean, is?
So it would depend a lot on how the plaintiff in your hypothetical case framed the case. So if they, um, sought to enjoin the enforcement of the voter initiative ordinance and the court granted an injunction against implementation of it. And then that, that injunction stayed in place and was ult- and ultimately the entire ordinance, let's take, like, play a hypothetical, the entire ordinance was invalidated.
Okay.
The city's ordinance would remain in effect the whole time and would continue in effect afterward as long as it was not the subject of, uh, of the legislation, of, 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 of the legal challenge. What complicates that is, um, once the or- the ordinance will go into effect 10 days after the city council ratifies the results of the election. So if it approves it, 10 days later, the initiative goes into effect. If there is not injunctive relief already in place at that time, then this part of this legislative action is that the city's existing ordinance is repealed and the new ordinance goes into effect. You know, at that point, the court could enjoin the, the, if the court then enjoined the new ordinance, one thing that the city, even if the city was not willing to intervene and defend the case, one thing that we might do is, is ask for the court to clarify what the effect of a ruling is on the city's current ordinance.
Okay, with that, let me thank everyone for sticking around for the past three hours. And I will open it up to the public for comment on this item. If anyone in the public would like to comment on this item.
Good evening, council members, city manager, Dennis Chilardi, resident of Larkspur. Wow. Thank you. You're taking me back years of, to, years ago, when I had to stop and listen and do all this stuff. I just want to point out, I think an important issue is to tell the tenants that just by the numbers we've heard tonight, half a million dollars, maybe two million, there's only 2,000 rental units that will be subject to this. That's $250 a unit or $500 a unit, depending if you want to use a half a million or a million. That's real money to the tenants. On a monthly basis, that's higher than the rent increases that we've been putting through at four and 5% to the tenants. And we get to recover that because it's a full recovery process. City's going to get paid. We're going to charge the tenants. The tenants lose out in the end. And also for you to know, in the last 40 years of the rental properties that I have, I've evicted one tenant, not anyone in Larkspur either, and I've only got 30 units in Larkspur. The major issue that is facing the tenants and residents of Larkspur right now are the seniors who have now increases in their basic income above whatever they're getting from a retirement or social security. Just their own cost of living, not even the rent is what's driving them into a desperate situation. Uh, I had a tenant who'd been for 20 years in Greenbrier, South Aliso, nice place. And I met with him just recently because he had to leave. He said, I can't afford to live here. And it wasn't the rent. He just couldn't afford to live. And he moved back in with a family member in San Francisco. These are real stories and I would think we'd be a lot better off if we could take that half a million or a million dollars a year and set up a program to use it to help support the tenants who are need. The, the train's going down the track to create a registry and to have all the data about the number of units and the prices. We also should look at the tenant and the age of the tenant. That information is readily, for the most part, available just in voter registry. You get the birth year. So, uh, I appreciate what you're doing. It's a complex situation. And because of the public issues here, I applaud you for what you're going through. But as we get into this and, uh, we start our own landlord education process, I'm going to be emphasizing to my tenants, look at the true costs of what's going to be happening here. And from a practical standpoint, all of these rules, especially about displacement and coming back in, reality is I've got apartment buildings that have Zinsco electrical panels. I can't get insurance. I gotta replace them and I can't get the parts. It would take six months to a year to replace the major switch boxes. If I have to close down a building and I have to displace 28 units of tenants, that, that just makes no sense. There'd be no economic reason for me to even continue ownership of the building. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other, uh, public comments?
I know.
Hi, city council, city manager and city attorney. Um, thank you for that very robust discussion. I think what I'm hearing is a, a great deal of alarm over, uh, this initiative that's been proposed. And, and you know, to be clear, this is not one ordinance. This is an amalgamation of six to seven different tenant ordinances that have been passed in different jurisdictions. And here, uh, you know, being thrown together as one mega ordinance. So it's hard enough for a city council with the support of staff to unpack and to, to think about, you know, every day voters to understand it, which is why, you know, I do think, um, this conversation is, is very important. You know, I think, you know, another thing to keep in mind is what we're talking about. And obviously we've all been talking about rent control in the city of Larkspur for a long time. Is a distinction between some of the proposals here and what we had spent a great deal of time talking about. This is a very extreme measure that's being proposed. There is a world of difference between a rent cap at 60% CPI, 3% versus 7%, um, you know, and, um, you know, I, I do think it's important to, to put this in a different bucket. You know, the other thing that's really important to recognize, again, given the nature, the broad and sweeping nature, which council member Andre has pointed to and all of the council members have asked questions about is, you know, the fact that we, this is a, a really drastic distortion of the relationship between tenants and their providers, right? And it's not just apartment providers, single family homes are not exempt from this. So if you rent out your room to somebody and you don't happen to share a bathroom or kitchen, guess what? They get a whole slew of, you know, uh, protections. And frankly, I, you know, I hesitate to call it protections. I really think it's a lack of accountability. I think there is a, an agreement and I think that in here is in any kind of relationship where you say, I'm going to do my part and I'm going to, and the other person says, great, I'm going to do my part. But here you see, you know, provisions about, um, you know, obviously rent control just cause. I would note, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about what's unlawful or not. The notice provisions that add time to state mandated notice periods, I think are another point to consider. I, you know, recently LA county tried to extend their notice periods for certain tenants to 30 days and that got struck down by the court. Um, and so, and LA county had to, you know, pay the costs of that. So that's just something, um, to consider. The other, you know, there's also, um, material about rights to organize and I think we've talked about some of this stuff. It says that, you know, you have to allow tenants to organize to talk about rent increases. Well, you know, we've had advice from competition lawyers about the fact that, you know, really unions are the only ones that can enter into collective bargaining agreements. So, uh, you know, it's just, it's another area to consider when we're talking about, uh, the legality, um, of the organ- ordinance. You know, we talked about the utility billing. Now that's something that's concerning, not just from a cost perspective, but if you think about conservation efforts, which I know the city of Larkspur is very focused on. If somebody's not paying their water bill or their trash bill, guess what happens? They use as much water as they want. And we've seen these scenarios play out in cities like San Jose. So I think it's, you know, there's, in terms of fiscal impacts on the community, um, I think that's a really important one, um, to consider. You know, we've talked about the costs of build, um, you know, and I think one of the provisions, you know, that we may not have talked about, I think subsection three does talk about the impact on the availability of housing. And I know we're not going to get into campaigning, but you know, some of these measures, I mean, if you look, first of all, the rent cap, the, um, substantial renovation, all of that stuff. If you're talking about someone who's going to invest in the community, they're going to be dissuaded from doing that. Developers are surely not going to look at this and say, oh, let me invest a significant amount of resources into, into building in the city of Larkspur, which we know is also an essential part of, um, increasing supply and making, um, housing affordable. The last thing I'll say is, you know, there's also a piece about what is quote tenant harassment. And, you know, this is, and frankly, this, this entire ordinance is somewhat of a boilerplate that we're seeing locally played out, but also across the state. And, you know, imputing, you know, good faith requirements into whether someone can evict or not. Again, it could be an abrogation of state law that allows you, that have very defined laws about what you can do and, and enforce your legal rights as a housing provider. So it could be a legal issue, but also that provision contains a section that says, you know, you get mandatory legal fees and trouble damages. So that's an incitement to litigation. It basically is going to hand, you know, people that may not be motivated by good faith to essentially say, hey, you know, I'm not going to pay my rent. You can't evict me or else I will sue you for harassment. And guess what? You run this risk. And that's, that's a scary prospect, um, for people. And I think if there is increased litigation, it may affect technically the county more, but certainly as a citizen of, of the county, um, you know, that's something to consider as well. If the courts are going to be inundated with these type of lawsuits, I don't think those are dollars or resources, um, um, best spent. So that's, that's all.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Reed Baxter from Bonner, uh, Greenbrier, manage the apartments, shopping center, certified residential manager and construction, uh, leader. And, uh, I have a few challenges with this. I also want to say thanks for hearing me out and thank you city staff for your analysis. I thought they did a pretty good job. I think there's a few things that need to be flushed out. Certainly cost is going to be way higher than 500K. I'd go north of a million, start factoring litigation and all the processes. We'd have to apply for every one of these units every time it happens. Trying to coalesce all that to September 1st of every year creates an unreasonable burden on our side, uh, in terms of administrative costs. Uh, I would caution the city council to focus on the effects of this ordinance for the long-term volume of housing in the community. It's, it certainly kind of keeps the, the current tenants in place, but it makes it almost impossible to allow new tenants in. And at the same time, you know, having to appeal to break even, that's not really a market I think I would want to continue to be in. So if this passes, there will likely be more than just units coming off the market. There'll be buildings coming off the market from the mom and pops to the larger providers. I would encourage you to think a little bit about that. Certainly when you go to Sacramento and you try and get additional funding, you try and flush out your general plan. I think those are worth considering. I agree with what was said on utilities to currently allocate that there's an environmental impact of not holding folks accountable. If we have a 20-unit building, does that mean we have 20 garbage cans, 20 compost bins, 20 recycling bins? Are you guys actually going to do the audits for those? Is that coming down the line? I did like the proposal for an MHT program, which I think we talked about last year, where we're actually helping the folks that need the assistance. There's many great organizations from St. Vincent's, Paul, and, and we're in Fair Housing that help out with these types of programs to target where it's needed without having the economic repercussions that eliminate housing, that de-incentivize building. Would anybody really come and build in Larkspur after this passes? If that's the case, probably not. But I would caution you guys how you think about this and what you say publicly over the next few months, because the housing providers as well, the tenants are going to be watching. And they're going to have to make decisions in advance of the election on what they do with their properties. Regardless of what happens then, that's going to happen now, today, you know, over the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, other public comment?
Come on up.
I think we know each other by now. And honestly, I was not planning to speak tonight. I really wasn't. But I couldn't help but taking all of these notes as, so all of this speaking was taking place. So if you don't mind, I'd like to respond to somebody, to some of them and maybe to somebody and.
If you could do, do me a favor, um, we, we know who you are, but just for the record, if you could just give us, give us, give your names to people who don't know you that are watching.
My name is Richard. Um, I live in Skylark. I've lived in Coeur d'Alba, I mean, in, uh, my daughter lives in Coeur d'Alba. I've lived in Larkspur for about 22 years and Marin for 50 years. I know you've all heard this before. Uh, and so I've been involved with the tenants association in Skylark. That's why I'm here today and I'm, I'm one of the proponents that was on the petition. First of all, I'd like to say that I agree with council member Wei, who said months and months ago, this issue of rent control is too important for this council to decide on. I think, quote unquote, it should be taken to the voters. So we looked into how we could do that and we did it. And we did it with volunteers with almost no money as opposed to the people who went against, who put out measure D against the rent control that you guys passed. Who got paid with a war chest from, from landlords and property owners and got paid $20 per signature and lied when they came to us for our signatures. So just to remind you, we did it our way, an honest way, where we answered questions, we knew our topic. We tried to explain to them why we wanted it on the ballot and if they thought it was reasonable. if they thought it was reasonable to at least put it on the ballot. And overwhelmingly, said yes. So, I'm listening tonight, and I wasn't sure if I was listening to, you know, electioneering or not. Free utilities. There is no such thing as free utilities, there never have been. Where do you think these landlords pay their utilities from? From the rents they're charging us. We've always paid utilities, and we will always pay utilities. And frankly, I think that fees for utilities that are being imposed now, that I've never seen be imposed before, are a way to get around rent control, because utilities have always been included in rent control, the ones that you don't have a meter for. So I just wanted to make that point, that there's no such thing as a free utility, and that's not what we're asking for. And I don't think that renters are asking for that, because they know they've always paid them. The gentleman landlord said that there would be a $200 a month fee to administer this to landlords, but my understanding was that it's $200 a year. Is that true? Or is it per month? Are we talking $200 a year or per month?
Uh, I, I'm not sure if we're, how, how this works, if we can respond, oh, what I mean.
My understanding is that it's per year.
And then let me ask staff if it's appropriate to respond to.
It's up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, well, do, do you have an answer to the question that you feel comfortable answering?
It's an annual fee per unit.
Annual fee per unit.
Yeah, it's annual. And when you consider some of these rents that are now going up to 3,000 and more a month, $200 a year? You're gonna pretend that that's gonna, you know, affect that bottom line somehow? Uh, I don't think so. I don't, I don't think so at all. So, and the other thing I, I, I noticed was the projected numbers of 400,000, I saw the number of first, 400,000, and I saw the number of 2,000 units. So 2,000 units by 400, but by $200 for a year is 400,000. So you've got the bulk of what was in those numbers right there. And again, the landlords are not gonna pay that, the renters are, they're gonna pass it on to the renters, just like they pass everything else on to the renters. So our shoulders are bearing quite a load right now. We're holding a lot of things up in this society, in this economy, you know, you could call it the working class if you will, but, you know, people home corporations, they're not out there making the product, they're not out there selling the product, anything like that. It's the people who go to work every day and have to live in these apartments and pay rents that are doing that. So I just wanted to, to mention that also. Another thing that came up was educate the people. And it sounds like you're proposing to educate the people with speculation. It, it, it frankly sounds like campaigning. I don't think that's an appropriate thing to do in a setting like this. We understand that in a fair competition, there were members who did not want rent control, or wanted a rent control at a number that would still allow landlords to make a good amount of money. I, I just didn't think this was the right venue to bring up all of these objections and then try to figure out ways to convince voters that it wasn't affordable somehow. And that's the way it was coming across to me. And I, and I honestly, for the first time, and I've never addressed the city manager or the attorney, the city attorney, but I want to thank them both for bringing the subject back to the law, to election law, to state law, to what's allowed, to what's really not allowed. I thought that's a certi- that's a service to the voters, to let them know what the limits are in terms of how you could further your own personal agendas. And I agree, go out there and campaign and get involved in that whole process and everything. But I don't think this is the venue for myself. A couple of other notes I took. It's related to the other one, using the word bankrupting the city. Really? Really, seriously, something like this could bankrupt the city? You, you would have to come up with some numbers to really sh- show in a way other than a hypothetical or a hunch or something like that. You'd have to come up with some real numbers based on scientific study or call it what you want, some kind of objectivity. I know we all have our personal preferences, and we all have the right to have, and, and I do, you do, everybody does, but I, I'd like to see a, a level playing field where at least there's, there's a possibility of, of, of a fair competition among differing opinions and different philosophies. I'll go down my, my list here. And then again, you know, you, you're talking about ordinances where you might be required to, to hire staff. Well, aren't all ordinances and laws, don't they all require hiring of staff? If you pass a law against certain crimes, doesn't that obligate you to hire police and have a police department? So any ordinance that's passed, it's understood that if something over here is important enough to hire staff, why aren't all laws and ordinances important enough to have staff hired? Uh, the gentleman who came up with the land, he said, "In all this time, I've only had one eviction." So why are we putting so much emphasis on evictions, like the boogeyman, you know? In fifty years in Marin, I've had three mom and pop landlords. The greatest experience of my life. They didn't need laws to regulate them, some of them waited a year or two to raise my men, my rent modestly. They were fantastic landlords, and they're the mom and pops that we're somehow trying to protect by this. Well, I don't see how they, you know, they've been doing this all along anyway, and I'm sure they would continue to do this. So they're, they're providing a service because they're not corporate landlords. And I think we should be honest that to use mom and pops or small landlords to protect corporate landlords, who are the true outsiders, how far away from here is Wall Street? Three thousand miles or something?
Hey, Richard, I, I, I just want to let you know, uh, normally, we do about three minutes. Um, I'm letting you go a, a lot longer because there were a couple of people speaking on behalf of the landlords, you're the only person for tenant.
I understand.
But I need you to kind of wrap it up, we're pushing about ten minutes left.
I took notes from a couple of hours of things you said.
I, I, I understand, but, I, I, I understand, but, but we usually limit this to three minutes, I'm giving you ten minutes.
Okay.
So you got about two minutes left, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, I think I've gone over most of my, uh, my notes here. Yeah, uh, building in Larkspur. How large is Larkspur? I mean, who are you going to dissuade from building here, when there isn't that much building anyway? And it hasn't, I haven't seen that much building, uh, the whole time I've been here in, in all of Marin. So it's not like we're talking about, there's all this building going on, and then all of a sudden, it's not. And when it does go on, it's not for me or for most renters, you still have to come up with your first, you know, your mortgage payments and all of that. So, when we see building, it's not really affordable building that we would be dissuading anyway, because I, I haven't seen it happen in all this time. So, I think that's most of my notes, I might have forgotten one or two things. Oh, in twenty-two years in Larkspur at Skylark, my rent increases, believe it or not, averaged three percent a year for twenty-two years. Now how come a complex that large, that was here that long, was able to do it on three percent a year? And they did it. And from where I understand, that the family bonded with a lot of money, of course, they had other sources of revenue also, but just that as a number, since we're talking numbers, somehow it worked for that time. But all of a sudden, no, no, we, you know, you've gotta make mega bucks and, and that kind of thing. So you've heard the arguments, you've heard people up here speaking, and I don't want to get repetitive, but I...
Thank you.
I do appreciate what you do and the time you devote to it, and I hope this process could keep going.
Thank you, appreciate your comments. Uh, anybody else for a public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment. I, at this point, um, kind of exhausted, so uh, is there any more council discussion at this point? And if not, I will ask for a motion, uh, adopting Resolution 4224, submitting the initiative uh, to Larkspur voters. Is there anyone that would like to make such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Is there anyone who would like to second such a motion?
Guess I'll second it.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Council member Andre?
Yes.
Council member Paulson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Wei?
Yes.
Mayor Candell?
Yes.
So at this point, um, let me ask, is there any other direction that staff would like uh, from council before we wrap up this conversation?
I'd like to suggest that the council allow the mayor and vice mayor to sort of be an informal committee to discuss with the city manager and staff if there are future agenda items on this topic that you'd like to, to see presented.
Fair. Uh, does anybody have a, do I need a vote for that?
Uh, you do not, Mr. Mayor, unless you have a strong objection from one of your fellow...
Do I have a strong objection from one of my fellow councilmembers? I do not, therefore that subcommittee has heretofore been formed. Is there anything else that, that you need from uh, council at this point, uh, on this item?
I, I think that's sufficient for now, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, anything, uh, anyone on council would like to comment on this item? Okay, hearing none, I will close business item eight point one. Next item, adjournment. Have a good night, everybody.